All right, everybody ready? Jeff, you ready? Dave, Susan? Ready? Okay, I'm going to call the order. The July 29, 2020 meeting of the Board of Education. We're at Hubble Middle School. It's at seven o'clock. Mrs. McConaughey, would you please call the roll?
Here.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal to all, with every justice and right.
First up, modifications to the agenda. Does any, do any board members have requested modifications to our agenda tonight? Okay, hearing none. We will move to public comment. Before that, before we get to public comment, I'd like to thank the many members of our community who have shared their opinions and concerns with us on the District 200 reopening plans for the 2021 school year. We recognize that this is a difficult issue for many people. We've received feedback spanning all perspectives, and it's clear that there are no, there is no solution that will make everyone satisfied. We've had many articles and studies shared with us. It is not surprising that there's a lot of conflicting information and opinion out there. Our district leadership and planning teams have been working incredibly hard on how to safely and effectively reopen schools since this past spring, and I want to make special note of all the many people who have acknowledged, thanked, and provided encouragement to these teams. Mrs. Lockenho, do we have public comment tonight? No public comment. Uh, we do have some emails that we are going to, Dr. Schuler, acknowledge. You want to do it at the end? Okay, we'll do that at the end of the meeting.
Brad, before we move on there, I'd like to comment one thing about the emails we're getting.
Sure.
And that is that I, they're, I'm, I'm really pleased how respectful they generally are. You know, we've had a history of, you know, angry people on different topics and so on that write really terrible emails. And I, and I'm really proud of our community on how they're addressing this and, you know, so respectfully and understand both points. So, you know, I, I really appreciate that.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, um, so we, we, as we mentioned in our agenda, we're going to acknowledge the people who have sent us email, but, um, we are going to do that at the public. Sure, we're, we're kind of pausing live here. So I'll make an adjusted opening to public comments. So since we don't have any public comment in person, uh, we did note that community members not attending this meeting in person and who wanted to provide comments to the board had the opportunity to send an email to the Board of Education between the posting of this agenda and five o'clock today. All board members received and will or already have read these emails. Uh, it was noted on our posted agenda that these emails were to be, to include in the subject line that they were intended for acknowledgement at the July 29 Board of Education meeting. These emails will be acknowledged in, in a moment, but not read in their entirety and placed in the board communication log as a matter of public record. Dr. Schule, you want to go ahead and kind of acknowledge the?
Yeah, I will. And again, I'm just going to acknowledge who the emails, uh, came from. All of the email that you received tonight addressed the topic of the reopening plan and, uh, and some feedback around the, the reopening plan. So, uh, the board all received emails from Luke Murray, Diana Duddy, Erin and Peter Walsh, Sarah Paver, Catherine Schler, Lex Berta, Katie Wood, Sarah Weber Lasco, Lex Lazo, Jaclyn Mellor Voat, Molly Wilhelm, Rosario Paredes, Tricia Yonkey, Tricia Swansstrom, Jessica Madsen, Autumn Cottone, Mary Ellen Schwartzkopf, Michelle Graham, Jennifer Glowacki, Brian Campan, Andrea Martin, Tammy Doorty, Andy and Wee Schissler, Katie Pasaki, Nicole Scott, Paul Agiar, and Cheryl Davidson. Those were all of the messages that came in before five o'clock. And again, I just want to make sure everybody is aware and, and board is aware that all board members saw those emails in their entirety and had a chance to review them.
Right. Thank you. And just a reminder for anybody who might be watching on YouTube, uh, that specific questions regarding the District 200 reopening plan should be sent to a dedicated email address at communications@cusd200.org. Uh, since we don't have any public comment in person, we'll move to our discussion items tonight. Uh, we have one discussion item, uh, that is the update on the District 200 reopening plans for the 2020-21 school year. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Schuler and his team. Dr. Schuler is getting set up at the podium. Change of pace tonight.
All right. Microphone on? Good, thanks, uh, to the board. So we're, we're going to present from up here, uh, tonight. Part of the reason why we're presenting from up here tonight, not that I want to have my back to the audience, so I apologize to everybody that I'm, I'm talking, uh, facing this direction, but especially for purposes of the, the camera and the audio for everybody that's tuning in remotely, it's easier for folks to be able to see not only what's on the screen, but the, the speakers if we, we present from here. So, um, we're here tonight to, uh, to give the board an update on our reopening plans. Tonight, uh, to give the board an update on our reopening plans, um, I, the, the information that was included in our reopening plan, we presented on July the 8th. Uh, a document was shared out, uh, to the community shortly thereafter that had, uh, quite a bit of information. What we're really focusing on tonight are some of the areas where we were, where we have received frequently asked questions. So some areas that we really want to clarify, we're not going back through the plan in its entirety or information that we've reviewed or, or spent time with the board on, at the presentation on July the 8th, but just some areas that we do want to bring a little bit of clarity to around the plan. So, um, the first, uh, who's got the clicker? Uh, thanks, Chris. So, uh, first slide, this is a repeat out of the last, uh, presentation, but I just think, uh, important to, to recap. So, March 17th, um, was the date that e-learning was mandated through, uh, school closure across the state of Illinois. We operated in, uh, e-learning or remote learning through the end of the school year. Toward the end of the month of June, of June, so June 23rd and 26th, the Illinois State Board of Education and the Illinois Department of Public Health released their joint guidance to schools about the safe reopening of schools and the conditions under which, uh, schools in Illinois could reopen. And so, uh, we've had a period now of, um, about eight weeks when you look toward the start of the year to get our plans in place. Important to, to note that while that guidance came out, uh, in June, in anticipation of that guidance, our teams began work, uh, in late May, um, really developing plans or scenarios, kind of anticipating where those guidance areas were going to come in. And so, um, we didn't start on June the 23rd when that guidance came out. We had an opportunity instead to bring some clarity around our plans, which we've continued to do, right, since the, the plan was released and, uh, and again, continue to make refinements as that guidance has evolved and it has been ever evolving. So, on the very first slide of the presentation, we said this is our plan as of tonight, right, as of the date that we are, but we do understand that this, uh, that the, the pandemic and the conditions under which we're operating and the guidance under which we are operating has continued to evolve. And so as, uh, as such, we've continued to, uh, adapt and adjust our plans. So, July the 8th, uh, we did, uh, present our plan to the Board of Education and to the community. On July the 9th, we did a series of Zoom sessions with our staff, uh, to answer questions and try to, to bring clarity around the plan, uh, with our, our staff. July the 10th, as the board knows, we did open registration, uh, to our families, uh, and in that registration, our families, the option of picking between the in-person plan, that being full in-person at the elementary or the hybrid model at the middle and high school, or the virtual academy, which is the fully online, uh, option. July the 20th, we did a series of community Zoom, uh, sessions. We had two of them that evening, um, that each had 500, uh, community members. Again, we continued to answer questions. Uh, a lot of the questions were questions that had been incorporated in the FAQ document, but we continued to, uh, to address questions as they came up. On July the 21st, Erica Ekstrom did another community Zoom session for, uh, our, our families that had questions about our special education programs, how that would operate. On July the 23rd, Lamara Spueyo, uh, who's our Director of English Learners and Equity, um, did a Zoom session in, in Spanish to answer questions, um, for our families. July the 24th, that registration closed. And where we really are now then, starting the week of, of July 27th, is based on that registration information we're going to go through in a minute. We're working on staffing for both, uh, the virtual academy, uh, and staffing for our in-person, uh, options. Come, with that comes a lot of human resource work as we look at where, uh, our staff slot, as well as, uh, we, we look at, uh, how the, uh, the folks that are, are teachers that are not able to return can. The weeks of August the 3rd and 10th, um, both our middle and our high schools especially are going to be very busy adjusting, uh, their master schedules, uh, to, to organize, uh, reorganize kids into classes. We need to adjust our, our transportation and operation, um, schedules and, uh, and hire staff as necessary. So, um, we're going to share a little bit later in the presentation where our class sizes came in at the elementary level to adhere to that required six-foot physical distancing in every classroom. And to, to do that, we are going to have to hire staff. So as we add sections, um, we're going to be doing some hiring as we, uh, we move through. And then the week of August 17th, we anticipate working through the final preparations, um, for, um, what we're going to talk about a little bit later this evening is, uh, is a suggested start changing to August the, the 25th. So our registration data, and this is as of five o'clock this evening, so we tried to bring this to you as up to date as we can. The good news is we have 93% of our students registered, um, for the school year. Um, that, that really is a, is a very high percentage of, of students that have responded. In the aggregate in the district, 79% of our families, um, have responded with interest for the in-person option. 19% of our families have picked the virtual option, and then 2% of our families have indicated that, um, they will be pursuing an option outside of District 200. That could be homeschool, that could be a private, uh, opportunity, there are any number of opportunities. They're not required to let us know which of those options. That is, a homeschool family is not required to register as a, as a homeschool family. They're just required to let us know that they will not be returning for the, uh, the in-person option. As you look at that breakdown across, uh, all of our levels, at the early childhood level, that's where we do still have some families that, uh, we need to connect with in terms of confirming their choice for the upcoming year, but at the early childhood level, we have 75% of our students that have indicated they're going to return in-person and 21% in the virtual space. At the elementary level, likewise, 75% of our families have indicated they're going to return to the in-person instruction, 22% for the virtual. Middle school, 81% have indicated a return to in-person with 18% in the virtual academy. And at the high school, 83% of our students have indicated a return to in-person with 16% at the, uh, the virtual academy. Just to give you some context, um, for next year of that percentage, we will have just under 2,200, 2,200 students, 2,200 students that will be participating in the virtual academy, uh, for next year. So we want to dive into some of the questions where, uh, we have continued to receive, uh, some questions and we want to bring some clarification around. One area in particular, uh, is our health and safety, uh, protocols. So symptom screening. Symptom screening is required for a return to, uh, to in-person learning. We are going to do, uh, or accomplish the, the symptom screening, um, through a self-certification, uh, process. So self-certification for a child under 18 has to happen by an adult or an adult caregiver that has to do that. A child under 18 cannot self-certify that they are free of symptoms, but the adult must. So, uh, our self-certification in your green folders, there are actually two versions of the self-certification, uh, sheet that are way, way toward the back. Um, one is a staff self-certification, one is a parent-student self-certification. Parents will complete this, staff will complete and sign this, and what it indicates is that if they are going to step foot inside of, uh, of a District 200 school, the parent is certifying that they have completed the symptom screening with their child. They've gone through the required questions that focus on various symptoms of COVID-19. They do not have a temperature, they have not been, uh, had COVID or been exposed to, uh, to COVID, uh, in, uh, in a required number of days. Again, that's all on the, the symptom screening, but parents and staff will complete that and then conduct, uh, self-certification before they step into the building. We've got a lot of questions on, uh, what our response protocol, um, will be for symptomatic students or staff, uh, in, uh, in our building. Um, so also in your green folder, um, what I've given to the board, and we're not going to go through all of it tonight, is actually the staff training protocol. This has actually already been shared, uh, with staff. We reviewed this, uh, a couple of weeks back at our core team, uh, and we, uh, we, it's been, been shared with staff. It provides all of the, the health protocols, um, for that. Important to note that all of our buildings will have two different health office spaces. They will have a regular health office space that will take care of student medications, basic first aid that might normally come down to the, uh, to the health office if the, uh, if the health office is, um, responding to diabetic concern, any of our, our traditional health concerns, that will happen inside of the regular health office, and then they will have an assessment room. So if a child or if an adult presents with a COVID symptom, they will immediately go to the assessment room, uh, where either, uh, our certified school nurse or, uh, a registered nurse, uh, uh, health official will conduct the assessment. And again, if they are presenting with any COVID symptoms, immediately, uh, they, they will leave the, uh, the school building, obviously as soon, for the student, as soon as we can, can get ahold of an adult to come in, but they will be in, uh, in, uh, separate space. Had a lot of questions on, so what happens, right, if we have a, a COVID case? Again, a student or staff. At what point can that individual, uh, return to work? Uh, the Illinois Department of Public Health actually has a decision tree that, uh, they are in the process of finalizing. Again, I've given you the draft version of that, uh, decision tree, um, in the, the back of your green folder. But important to note that, uh, if a student or staff member, uh, has COVID-like symptoms and they've had a positive test, they can only return to school after all three of the required, like, criteria hurdles are, are met. That they've been at least 10 days since their symptoms first appeared, that they are at least 24 hours without a fever, and that has to be without fever-reducing medication, and that all other symptoms, uh, have improved. So for example, cough, shortness of breath, any of the, the COVID symptoms that they were presenting with. Again, all three of those hurdles have to be cleared in order for, uh, an individual to return to, to work or school. We will have individuals that may have been, uh, that may have presented with a COVID symptom and, uh, their healthcare provider, rather than conducting a test, uh, uh, did, uh, did a, did a diagnosis within the office. Likewise though, same criteria will have to be met before that individual will return to work. They have to be at least 10 days since, uh, symptoms first appeared, 24 hours passed without fever and, uh, without support of fever-reducing medication, and again, all symptoms, uh, have to have, uh, have improved. If an individual is a positive, uh, case of COVID-19 but never presented with symptoms, again, at least 10 days, uh, have to have passed from that, uh, that COVID-19, uh, diagnostic test. So, again, if, if an individual is never symptomatic but has had a positive test, it will, they will still be, uh, required to, to be out of school or work for 10 days following that, uh, that initial test. Okay? We've had a lot of questions about the whole area of contact tracing. So again, we get, uh, a call. And so, um, calls, uh, regarding potential COVID-19, uh, cases may come from two places. One, it may come from the health department. So, an individual's been a, a positive test, health department immediately notifies us at the, the school, or it could come from a parent or a staff member self-reporting the, the result of a, of a positive test. Okay? In either case, as soon as that happens at the individual building, each building has a contact tracing team. That contact tracing team will be comprised of building administrator, principal or designee, Sue Vasco as the district coordinator, uh, for all, uh, COVID-19, uh, cases, and the individual health lead at that respective building. Uh, I know there was some community dialogue question or feedback around or questioning, wow, how can you have one person, Sue, managing this for the entire district? She's not managing it alone. Each of our buildings has a healthcare lead within the building. Sue is serving as the common point of contact with the health department and the common point of contact to ensure that our protocols are consistently carried out across all 20 of our, our buildings. So Sue alone is not doing all of the contact tracing, but Sue is working as the primary, uh, point of contact with, uh, the health department. There are frequently questions that come up that we need to get clarification on when we're dealing with either a potential case or a confirmed case, and so Sue will be that, uh, that point of contact. But in either case, that contact tracing team, as soon as notification comes to the building, that team will assemble, they will work with the health department and immediately conduct an analysis of who the potential close contacts are. Close contact is defined as being within six feet of an individual for a period of 15 minutes or longer. And again, that's not a District 200 definition of, of a close contact. That's Illinois Department of, of Public Health and DuPage County Health Department definition of that. But you'll immediately do the contact tracing to determine who the potential close contacts are. If there are any close contacts, and again, I want to remind the board and remind the community that if students are spaced out six feet apart in all of our classrooms, simply being in a classroom with somebody that is a COVID-19 case is not going to meet the definition of a close contact. So it, very likely, I believe, that if we have close contact issues, they're probably going to come from scenarios outside of school. Uh, perhaps before, after school, other, other points in time where, uh, where it is possible that, uh, that, that students or staff may be, be congregating, but inside of the classroom because of the physical distancing and the masking protocol, uh, that, that close contact threshold will not be met. Because of the window of time passing periods and the, the few interactive periods would not meet the, that, that close contact, uh, threshold. Uh, so immediately, the contact tracing will be done. Any students that were close contact will be notified both by phone and by letter indicating that close contact, and there's a very specific letter that will go to that family with instructions on quarantine, what that means and contact with, uh, the health department. We've also, uh, laid out through our administrative procedure around this, uh, that we have a second letter that, uh, we've developed, a, a second letter that is for, uh, a, a non-close contact, what the health department would call a low-risk exposure. So I'm in a classroom, not within six feet of, uh, of a confirmed case. That's a, that's a low-risk exposure to a COVID case. And we, we certainly have had a lot of parents, and I understand they've said, I'd still want to know about that. I'd want to know about that scenario. And so, uh, in our administrative procedure, there's a series of questions that that contact tracing team is going to answer with class or classes the student was in, were they on a transportation route? If we are running any kind of student activities or clubs, did they participate in any of those experiences? Did they participate in any program outside of the, the school building, like a TCD or a, a program external? And so for each of those cases, any student that would have been in that scenario would get the low-risk contact letter. And again, that low-risk contact letter, uh, indicates to the, to the family that there was a positive COVID-19 case, your child was not deemed to have been a close contact, there's nothing you need to do, but we want to make you aware of it and certainly, um, provide you with, uh, with an outlet should you have any questions, concerns, uh, that we can help with from our health office. So, two different sample letters that we've developed. We've already developed those sample letters. My understanding is the Illinois Department of Public Health is also coming out with a, with a, a model version of those sample letters that we'll be able to put up next to ours as soon as, as they're released as well. Physical distancing, uh, again, we, we've talked a lot about physical distancing, but again, I'm going to confirm both for the board tonight and certainly for our community. In the way that we have scheduled our in-person, uh, instruction, students will be six feet apart in all classrooms, right? There are no exceptions to that. I think there was some discussion early about the possibility of, of, uh, maybe individual scenarios where we might have a couple of desks six feet apart. We're going to run through in a few minutes for you some visuals of classrooms from across all of our schools, along with our numbers. There will not be at the start of the year, any situations where we have desks that are less than, uh, six feet apart. Dr. Salagi and a team, uh, of teachers, as well as principals from each building, have walked every building, every classroom, and there is an individual cap on that individual classroom. So, um, we, we've talked in the past about class-sized caps targets, right, with a little bit of flex. This year, they will not. They are lower and they are, they are firm caps. We will not move beyond a cap if it, if it would mean that, uh, a student is less than six feet apart. Inside, well, inside of the classroom, so I mentioned the student piece, what we've also allocated space for in the classroom is the assurance that the staff member or members inside of a classroom also have a physically distanced space to be able to instruct, to be able to work with students as well. So map out in that cap is an assurance that we have, we have adequate space for a staff member to be physically distanced from, uh, from students. Um, inside of, uh, all of our common areas, so hallways, offices, uh, in our stairwells, on our floors, um, we've, we've marked spaces, so when you go into our offices, you'll see waiting areas that are marked six feet apart. We've put lines in hallways to guide traffic so that, uh, we, we have traffic flowing in a, in a, in a common direct. Um, we've, we've worked to mark all, all spaces to help guide and flow traffic even in, uh, that passing period. Um, the district is providing face coverings for all students, face coverings for all staff, cloth face coverings. We're also providing, uh, each of our staff members, if they wanted, a face shield in addition to the cloth face, cloth face covering. And then we've worked with, uh, Erica Ekstrom, our special education department, uh, as well as Sue Vasco and our health services, the department, to determine where we have other places where staff need additional personal protective equipment based on the work that they might be doing with students. And so, um, we, we have ordered and we have, uh, on, we will have on hand an ample supply of any of the personal protective equipment that we will need, uh, based on, on staff enroll. I mentioned already, we've reduced our class sizes. We're going to show those to you in a, in a few moments, and, and of course, um, in settings where, uh, students may be prone to, to congregate, such as a washroom or an area like that, um, we will be monitoring to, uh, to. such as a washroom or an area like that, we will be monitoring to make sure that we're adhering to the physical distancing piece. Mr. Farley, I think you're coming up.
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Want to thank, start by thanking our operations committee that reserved all of the cleaning protocols. We had a team made up of membership that included all levels represented, the CEA, the WWEA. Our outsourced partners were also involved in this, as well as John Robinson, who's behind me, as we worked through some of the cleaning protocols in the building. First thing we did was moving through and evaluating the schools where Plexiglas partitions were needed. Thank you, Dr. Kyle also helped us with that process as we evaluated the Plexiglas partitions that we pushed into the buildings. And common areas, we're still continuing to make some of those and evaluate where they may be needed in other spaces. All of our classrooms will be equipped with hand sanitizers on the wall, wipes, disinfectant bottles, and paper towels that are all EPA-approved and deemed approved effective for COVID-19. Again, those hand sanitizers will be wall-type, as well as we'll have restanding stations. That'll be in common areas of the buildings as well. So we will have all of the buildings well-covered for the hand sanitizers. We're in the process of purchasing handheld sprayers for enhanced disinfecting, and it allows us to disinfect spaces a lot quicker. You probably have seen things on TV, they show these types of units. They're ionized types, as well as electrostatic, which cling to surfaces and sprays the disinfectant across all the different high-touch and hard-surface areas that we want to make sure we're covered. It'll allow us to get into bathrooms. We'll talk a little bit about that in a second. We are also working with our outsourced custodial service company to try and flex people into daytime. So we have coverage for our lunchrooms, bringing some of our night people down as we evaluate the classrooms, what they're going to look like. The cleaning and disinfecting process should go quicker at night because there's less in the classrooms. And so we're going to need those folks during the lunch hour. JR is also going to flex some of his district-wide people into the buildings as well at the middle-school level to help with cleaning at those levels as well. We're going to try and get to the bathrooms at least twice during the day. But I think with, as we continue to evaluate these sprayers that we're getting, we think we may be able to do that a lot more, try and get in there, at least after passing periods, to try and quickly disinfect those bathroom spaces. Again, the lunchtime is a concern. We're going to try and get into the classrooms as well. At the K1, I believe it is, Dr. Sallaghi, are going to be eating in the cafeterias. And so we'll, in the common areas. And then we're going to be looking to get custodians into the classrooms to assist with teachers with the cleaning of desktops and things of that nature. So we're continuing to work through that scheduling. And again, I think it was, we talked about, we want to make sure that staff are strongly encouraged to leave the buildings at the end of the day to allow that cleaning and disinfecting process to begin. Disinfecting desks has been a topic that has been discussed, a lot, a lot of questions about that. Again, all classrooms will have that EPA-approved disinfectant and towels in there that are effective for COVID-19. The disinfectant will be used to clean desktops and other surfaces within the classroom. At K, at the 6th through 12th level, teachers will use the disinfectant at the end of the period to spray the desk down. And then towels will be there for students to wipe down when they leave. Students that come in to the classroom will also have the opportunity to clean their desks if they want to just double, you know, make sure that the desk is clean. So they will have the option as well. And then at the pre-K to 5 grades, that disinfectant, that'll be available so staff can help with the wipe-down process, whether it's after lunch or if it's a paced classroom or a room where there's some changeover of students. We can make sure we have that capability to do that. On the ventilation side, we're in the process now of replacing all the filters in our mechanical systems. We use what are called, we previously use what were called MERV 7 filters. We went to MERV 8, which is approving. MERV stands for material, efficiency reporting system. We are moving to MERV 11, which is even a higher efficiency filter for collecting and filtering the air that comes into the classrooms. The filters are, tend to sometimes put a drag on the systems because of the higher efficiency of filtering. So we have to be careful with some of our older systems, that we don't burn out units or have issues with those type of filters. So we're kind of moving up slowly in those, use of those filters. All facility services started up all systems. So all buildings should be up and running right now with the air conditioning in their buildings. So if staff comes in to set up their classrooms and such, we will have those systems running. Once school begins, we are going to be flushing the air in our buildings, starting our systems earlier, up to three hours before students arrive, and making sure that those buildings are flushed out. And we're going to set our air dampers to allow for a dilution, bringing in outside air to dilute the classroom, air within the classroom and the buildings. And then we're going to encourage staff, when appropriate and possible, to open up their windows, if they have the capability, if they have windows in their classroom, to also bring in outside air into those spaces.
Thanks, Mr. Farley. So here's a look right now, if you look at our elementary class sizes. Dr. Schuler alluded to it earlier. These are average class sizes as of today. And you can see the ranges really are in the 14, 15, 16, 17 range. As mentioned before, our classroom capacities are based upon the physical space. So as we have visited all of our buildings, we've identified what the cap is to allow for that six-foot distancing, not only for our students, but for our staff or staff members that would be within a classroom. I thought it would be good, too, to have some visuals here. So we've spent time in many classrooms, looking at different configurations. And as we figured out capacities and determined those pieces, we wanted to provide the board of education, our community, a look into what some of our classrooms will look like. We've actually got some classroom pictures from each of our schools. You'll notice, yes, desks are in rows, seats are in rows. They are facing the same direction. There is an opportunity, though, in some rooms for there to be tables and other pieces in there. Ultimately, as our staff starts coming into buildings, they'll partner with their principal to configure classrooms. But we will always adhere to that six-foot distancing standard, both for our student seats and our staff areas. Here you can see a first-grade classroom at Washington. I think right now that classroom sits at about 13 or 14. You'll see a fourth-grade classroom at Madison. What I will tell you, as we went into buildings, not only did myself and our principals and Dr. Kyle and Mr. Farley have been, I actually started this work in May, in June, and even up to July. We were constantly evaluating classroom configurations and capacities. But to me, it's been, it's been refreshing, too, as we've engaged our union leadership in this work as well, touring through our classrooms and really looking and having the opportunity to set it up, and also seeing the unique setups of our buildings. You know, all of our buildings are unique and different. And I think that's something to be celebrated, but it also shows we can work together to provide a safe learning atmosphere for our students. We'll take a look into a Pleasant Hill classroom there. They've got very large classrooms. That's a second-grade room. Here you'll see a Hawthorne fourth-grade room, Whittier fourth grade, a Johnson first-grade room. And if you'll see, even as you're looking in there, you will see a teacher desk. You'll even see a small-group table in the Johnson classroom. So there is space for those pieces to be in, in many instances. Sandberg second-grade classroom and a Lowell fifth-grade classroom. Emerson, you'll see a Longfellow kindergarten classroom. Actually, there's multiple spaces within that room for different pieces to take place. And just finishing it out, Wheeze Brook and Lincoln. So we did, we did want to give a glimpse into what the classrooms will look like as we move in and welcome our kids back. I don't want to forget the Early Childhood as well. So you can see their school day on there, the 9:30 to 11:45, and the 1:00 to 3:30. They are shifting that day, though, that Wednesday day. It used to be the Monday day where their staff was engaged in professional work. It is now a Wednesday day for our Early Childhood piece. But they're still going to have their core instructional programming, all their subject areas from language arts, math, science. Obviously, a huge focus there on physical and social-emotional development at our Early Childhood Centers. And then most notably, any of our students with individual education plans, the related services are going to be provided for those students. Snack will be in the classroom, but our kids are physically-distanced, six feet away. And gross mortar is a part of that daily work. And just like at the elementary level, I'll touch on here before, we will be planning mask breaks, but we have a team that's worked on that. And I certainly cannot take credit, but one of our very bright teachers said, we need a new name for this. She said, we're going to call them Show Your Smile breaks, right? So we're planning work around that. They're planning that at Jefferson. The Elementary School Day, you've seen a preview to this before, is 9:30 to 3:30, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Wednesday is the 9:30 to 12:30 time. That allows us to do a deeper cleaning on Wednesday afternoon. And then we'll rotate that Wednesday for our half-day kindergartens. Again, bringing our kids back for in-person instruction allows us to focus on the core academics, specifically at the elementary level. We know that English, language arts, reading, writing, being a part of that, and math are extremely important, so we're really going to focus on those. Kids will still have opportunities in science and social studies. And really, bringing our kids back with our teachers is a social-emotional learning experience in itself. I've spent the past two years talking to you about the power of connection, the ability to see one another, to communicate with one another. It may be a little different because we'll be six feet apart many times, but I still think that there's a strong, strong social-emotional learning component to that and a real opportunity to build classroom communities in our elementary classrooms. So I think that that's going to be really exciting. Our PACE program, again, will go on as well. Minutes have been adjusted slightly. Part of that is, we know in all of our instructional areas, well, we are going to work really hard to meet the needs of our students academically and socially-emotionally. We also got to plan time for all the protocols that you've heard about, right? That are going to ensure safety and health. So when we look at that, as we're planning that, we, in PACE, will provide 50 minutes daily of math. And the ELA piece, which has always been a supplemental part of our elementary program, you can see the minutes there as well, 30 minutes, two days a week for third, 30 minutes, three days a week for fourth and fifth grade. Our specials as well, this will, again, our kids will have access to the reading, music, and art that they've had. And our specials will be 30 minutes daily. All of them will be 30 minutes. There's an opportunity here that's going to allow our teachers possibly to have some common planned time as well. And lunch and recess as part of the Elementary School Day, they'll be 30 minutes each. We are working at our primary level to have lunch in common spaces out of the classroom where kids are still six feet physically-distanced. And then recess, we have a team that's actively working on that. We actually just met this afternoon, and we're working on developing some guidelines around that where we can engage kids in some exciting activity and movement breaks outside of the building, obviously. So we're excited about that and know it'll be a good opportunity for our kids. And then throughout the day, we want our kids to have breaks, sorry, throughout the day, we want our kids to have breaks from their masks. And one of the things we talked about with the Show Your Smile breaks is they don't just need to be the opportunity for a child to go out and take their mask off. It can also be an opportunity to learn, to engage in different pieces. If it's a beautiful day, there's a lot of opportunity there. We've gotten the question about, what about inclement weather? And so we are looking in, actually into tents as an opportunity for our kids as well. So little glimpse of the Elementary School Day. We have had a team of teachers, a team of administrators, hard at work on the elementary schedule. So for me, it's been just a pleasure to collaborate with a lot of people in our district that are committed to bringing our kids back safely and providing them with a rich in-person experience.
Chris, before you leave elementary school, are there other spaces within schools that we have to use as a classroom that are not traditionally a classroom because of the reduced capacity?
Sure, that's a great question. At this point, we are not having to use any of our gyms or multipurpose rooms. However, as we've added some sections, we have had to use or allocate possibly a room that may have been used by specialists, that were maybe sharing a room. And now we're having to find some office spaces for those specialists or some of those pieces. So there is some configuration of rooms, but what we are trying to stay away from and have been able to thus far is having classroom in a space like this, right? So if something got shifted, it may be to a specialist's room. At times, it could be a music or art room, because music and art, right now, the plan is to have those in the general, in the home classroom. Those are actually rooms that can be used as a classroom. So, but not in our non-traditional places. We're not having class in those places.
Chris, will our LLCs be open?
We have a team working on that right now. We think that there's a pathway to do some work with the LLCs. It's going to look different, so I don't have specific answers on that. I know Melissa's been working with that group. But certainly, the plan is for now for them to be open in some capacity. But I will tell you, one piece that we will have to use some LLC space for is intervention spaces for our students as well. So as we've found spaces for classrooms to be, many times, those were spaces where students were receiving reading or math intervention. And now, we have to make sure those intervention spaces allow for six-foot distancing, which means we may have to use spaces like the LLC to provide intervention. So there will be portions of how the LLC operates, but we also are using that space for instruction, small-group instruction with specialists.
And so then the role of the LLC director, will it be more of a push-in situation?
It could be. I think that we're still determining that right now.
Question on class size. So you've shown us the average class size for the different grade levels. Within a school, will class sizes tend to be similar across the board so you don't have a teacher who happens to have a bigger classroom, have to teach more students just because she happens to have the space to fit them in?
Absolutely, yeah, especially at a grade level. So when we give those averages at the grade level, you really don't have any variability except if there was three sections, it may be 16, 16, and a 17. Or, you know, so there may be one apart. So by grade level, yes, those are close. But we may have a school that averages 14 at first grade, but averages 18 at fourth grade, or 17 at fourth grade. So you can see differences in grades, but not great variance in the classroom. With one caveat, as numbers are lower, and if we're keeping thresholds low, you know, there's another piece to developing class lists. And we still know that our schools are going to be working actively as they develop class lists to still balance student needs and look at how that plays into it. But I don't, I don't foresee great variance, you know, within our class sizes at a grade level at a school.
And the, for kindergarten, pretty much there's tables in there historically. Is that what's going on with the furniture in kindergarten?
Yeah, so certainly, we can't, right now, those tables were about traditionally four to five feet. So Mr. Farley's team has been working actively on allocating and finding and getting seating and desks for our students. We've also been working with a team of kindergarten teachers. There are some other opportunities besides desks. We've seen some kind of movable seats. We've seen some classroom setups that have some different variabilities that may be more beneficial for some of our kindergartners. So we're looking at those opportunities as well. But short answer to the table question is, we won't be using tables unless they were an elongated table that could at least see two kids six feet apart.
And that's why we didn't see any kindergarten pictures, because you're still working on it?
We do have one here. It's the Longfellow one.
Oh, I missed that.
In this classroom, it's set up for capacity, actually, at Longfellow, right now, their all-day kindergarten numbers are at around 10 or 11. So you would have a lot more space within this room. But you can see, actually, even on the backside of those chairs, she's actually put a space for their supplies and some of those pieces. And she's got a lot of space on the side as well.
Thanks.
Yeah, you bet. I'm going to, any other questions on elementary at this time? I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Murphy. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Murphy.
Thank you, Dr. Solagi. Since we met last time, we further developed our middle school and high school schedule and so you'll see that right here. And so with our hybrid schedule, we'll have two cohorts. Cohort A will attend school Monday and Thursday. Cohort B will attend school Tuesday and Friday. Wednesday will be a day for e-learning for all students. That will be synchronous instruction. Again, synchronous instruction means students will be live with student interaction and teacher, teaching and interacting with students for all periods of the day. That will also be an opportunity for us to do some deep cleaning in our middle schools and high schools on Wednesdays. Our transition building, we have some updates here too. So our schedule for the students attending our transition program in person, they will attend four days a week as well. One day will be an e-learning day, that will be Wednesday, so that's consistent across our district. The instructional programming components will remain the same at our transition building. Our students will consider, continue to receive their related services as indicated on their IEP in person. There are a couple of changes. One change being our students at the transition program have participated in like a communal meal preparation. That was part of their learning activities, we need to change that. So we are prepared, each student will create their own individual meal and use their own individual supplies. Another programming change has to do with our community trips. So at this time, we're really going to need to look at the conditions within the community and a student's readiness to return to the community trips to make a decision whether we are able to offer that opportunity or not. So we'll continue to communicate with our families in that program as to when those opportunities will be, will be able to present with those opportunities. I have several slides here to provide the board and our community with updates relative to the Virtual Academy. So at our early childhood center, we will have a dedicated administrator for our early childhood students that are in the Virtual Academy. We've received several questions with regards to related services, whether they will be provided in an e-learning environment. They will be for our students that are in early childhood. We are working on sample schedules, so those will be posted on our website very soon. And it is a two and a half hour day for our students in early childhood. At the elementary level, we will have a dedicated elementary administrator for the Virtual Academy. We are making considerations with regards to grouping students, so we're looking at middle school feeder patterns, but also homeschool and trying to group students with familiar faces. We will be able to provide a PACE specialist who will be able to provide math and reading programming. That's a question we have received often. We are also working on sample schedules, we're planning on posting those on our website very soon for our families. And it should be noted that the schedules that are going to be posted for the Virtual Academy, this, these are the schedules that also will be in place if we move into e-learning, if we have to move into e-learning due to phase three as well, or one and two, as well too. I do note, the reason why those haven't been posted quite yet is because we got new guidance from the State Board of Education on July twenty-third. Our teams have been reviewing that guidance to make sure that the samples reflect what the State Board has put out. And one more note on our elementary Virtual Academy, it will be five hours of learning for our students in grades one through five, but two and a half hours for our kindergarten students. At middle school and high school, we'll have a dedicated administrator for those students. At our middle school level, we will be able to offer our core courses, so English, language arts, math, science, social studies, PER and music. Those will be provided by a District 200 teacher. I will note though, there are some courses with low enrollment that may be needed to be provided by the community if that's what we end up approving tonight. That would, there are some courses that will need to be in that platform potentially. But that looks like very few at this time. At the high school level, we are working on course enrollment, so that's much more complicated. So we need to look at all of our students who have enrolled in the Virtual Academy. We look, we need to look at each of their courses that they've signed up for, we need to make a match, we need to create a master's schedule and we need to work on staffing. So those are the pieces there. And then there's a lot of other steps, but this is kind of a rundown of some of the major steps that we have happening next. We are going to be posting the supply list for our students at the elementary and middle school level that are involved in the Virtual Academy. We're going to work on device and materials distribution. So our students will receive those same materials that they would receive in person, they would receive those same curricular materials at Virtual Academy. We will be working on a parent handbook or an information for our families relative to the Virtual Academy. And lastly, we're going to work on student orientation. So we want our students to really understand what their programming is going to look like next year.
Melissa, I have a few questions, do you want them now or do you want them after?
I'm happy to take those, yes.
Okay, so a couple of things. For the two, for the Virtual Academy, for two and a half hours a day, say at early childhood and the five hours at elementary, I'm assuming that's not synchronous or is that synchronous? Are we giving breaks in there?
Yeah, great question. It will be a combination of both synchronous and asynchronous. And so our teams have put together a schedule for every subject area, how many minutes would be synchronous learning and how many minutes would be asynchronous learning? And we will also say, we recognize that there will need to be breaks throughout the day for our students and that's why we want to have a combination of synchronous and asynchronous. So the students don't have to sit in front of a device for the entire day. They will have that opportunity to step away and work on other assignments that might not be on a device at points of time in the day.
So I had a question from a, a community member asked me about class size capacity at, for the Virtual Academy, or what is that looking like?
Very similar to what our normal in-person class sizes had been, pre-pandemic.
I'm sorry, so a few more. What is the role of an elementary teacher in person for Wednesday afternoons? And what is the role for students on Wednesday afternoons?
Wednesday afternoon, students or teachers will be collaborating with one another and also participating in professional learning. Students will be provided assignments to continue their learning to make it a five-hour learning day.
And what about middle school and high school class size, what does that look like?
For in-person?
For in-person?
In-person. Um, I do not have exact numbers for that right now, but it would be half the size of students that would normally had been in-person, so. Good, thank you, Dr. Kyle, thirteen to seventeen, we've been working together on those items.
And then are we looking at a plan that we're going to be coming out with for parents on re-entry at say the trimester or semester mark?
Yes, absolutely. That is on our punch list of items that we need to work through and so we're going to put together a very detailed process so that families know what that would entail.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
If, if we go to full remote learning, what's going to be the difference between remote learning and Virtual Academy?
Not much, there won't be much difference. So the, this, the experience will be the same, the curriculum will be the same, the number of minutes that students receive synchronous and asynchronous would be the same. The only difference, I will say, is for the Virtual Academy, our courses that are low enrollment, that we aren't able to provide a District 200 instructor and we would utilize an online course provider, that would be a difference.
Thank you.
Question on the high school courses. So if, or middle school, if students can change at the trimester or the semester mark, so logic tells me then it has to be a darn close approximation of the same class so that they can transition right in?
Correct, so we are actually, for the Virtual Academy, we have downloaded all of our students' current schedule and we're making a match with that programming for the Virtual Academy.
So if the, if the hybrid model at the middle school and high school have to go full remote learning and we still, we still have the Virtual Academy going on, Dr. Schuler's alarm's going off. We still have the Virtual Academy going on, we're not going to begin to mix those, they're still going to be separate, right?
Yeah, thank you for asking this question, I've received this question several times. No, we will not combine those groups. Here's the reason why. Once we place staff into the Virtual Academy and we create sections and classes and place students in the Virtual Academy, we're going to create a schedule and a master's schedule for that entire program and that will need to stay intact. They will really operate in two separate ways in that manner.
All right, any other questions on?
I have a list, we'll get to the end.
Okay.
So do I.
So we're done with Virtual Academy.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. Human Resources has been busy the past couple of weeks. We surveyed our staff, we've been kind of going through how many of our faculty and staff have some restrictions that would not let them come back for in-person learning. So what we've been doing right now is actually this morning, we're working with Dr. Solagi and Melissa Murphy, looking at the teachers that we have available and the teachers we need for Virtual Academy. So actually this morning, we did send out phase one of the offers for the Virtual Academy. We also worked with the middle school principals today. We feel like we're going to be able to give out some middle school positions to the people who wanted them tomorrow. So it's going to be in phases. It's kind of like a lot of puzzles, the things we're working on, a couple of things I wanted to highlight. We worked with the union to extend retirement window till August seventh, twenty twenty because there may be situations where we have people, staff with medical conditions, we might not have jobs that match that. So if that happens, as an HR department, we have to work with those individuals and see what their options are for next year. One of them could be for some people an early retirement, so we did do an MOU in that manner. Once registration is complete and we're getting close to being complete, we can finalize the Virtual Academy. Our goal is to complete that by this week if we can, our goal is to do it by Friday. Because once we do that, we're going to see how many positions we might have to hire at the elementary level and if there's some backfilling to do. So for Human Resources right now, we're working really hard, so I have to tip my hat to Kristi Kuntz and Mariana Ochoa, who've been working really hard with hundreds of our staff trying to work through different requests. So that's where we're at with Human Resources, we're going to be working hard the next couple of weeks and making sure that we staff both the Virtual Academy and in-person learning for next year.
So just a quick question, so, you know, for those staff that are not able for whatever reason to go back to in-person learning and maybe don't slot into the Virtual Academy, or if you're going to have a group of staff that, if there's been any thoughts about what we're going to, how they might fit in?
Well, we would meet with them individually and talk to them about their options through the CEA and the WWEA, what types of leaves are available. We are looking at different positions that might be needed depending. So we're going to look at all options and try and work through all of it. I just, in the HR role, you can never promise that everybody who has a medical condition would just be assumed to virtual job. We're trying to match their, the student need with what the teachers have as well. I'll give it to Erica.
So on the communications and community engagement front, following last, our last board meeting on the eighth, we did hold staff Q and A Zooms and then as Dr. Schuler mentioned on the front end, some parent Zooms on the twentieth, twenty-first and twenty-third. I really want to give a huge shout out to our community partners, specifically World Relief, People's Resource Center, Warrenville Youth and Family Services, Outreach Community Center in Marion Park. They are part of our Communications and Community Engagement reopening team. And they, last week when we had our core team meeting on Thursday and even the week before, I shared with them how a lot of our registration numbers were very dismal. And they went and knocked on doors. They did so much personal reach out to our families that that number really skyrocketed. And I know that it's as a result of a lot of their efforts. So I want to say thank you so much to them, they've been incredible partners. They provide a lot of academic and other types of supports for our families throughout the school year and they, they very much want to help our families too. And so I just want to thank them and make sure that the community is aware of the great work that they've been doing. We have started working with our park districts to ask them for their support. They're trying to figure out what their programming in the fall is going to look like. And so they've, between, both of us have been reaching out to each other. We've had formal meetings with Wheaton, Warrenville and I believe Winfield Park District. Wheaton and Warrenville Park Districts both put out a survey today seeking feedback from families saying what kind of programming do you need? So like, for example, for both staff and parents, are you needing some childcare support? On, especially on those Wednesdays for elementary students when it's a half-day or maybe some of those younger middle school students who aren't quite ready to stay home. Or for students who maybe on those online days need that extra support and motivation just to keep them on task. And so they, I just want to thank our park districts too because they are very, going into this very open-minded with how they can support and how their programming might look very different in the fall. We are going to provide a community update with all of this information from the board meeting tonight, tomorrow, in your board highlights email. We do continue to encourage staff and community to send your questions to the communications email address so that we can continue to update that FAQ document and also make sure we answer all of those questions that family and staff have. And then finally, well, not finally, I've got a couple of other notes. All of the information about our reopening plans are on our website at cusd200.org/reopeningplans. Families can start to expect to hear more from their building principals about school-specific plans. We are still working on providing video overviews of what the insides of schools look like, working with principals to share out some pictures similar to what Dr. Solagi shared out so that families can feel more comfortable if they are electing that in-person experience, that they know what the inside of those schools will look like. So any questions on communications, community engagement?
Thank you, Erica. That's the, completes the presentation now, I'll just kind of go around the room and board members ask individual questions. I know Jim and Rob have apparently long lists already.
Yeah, Mr. Paulson, can I just make one, one final thought in kind of wrapping this up? So it's certainly the end of the slides. But we've received, I think, as you mentioned, at the front end of the meeting tonight, we've received quite a bit of feedback from the community. A lot of different thoughts, a lot of very thoughtful questions. I do appreciate and I do want to thank the community members for the fact that I think virtually all the communication that's come to the board has recognized the fact that this has been a very complex task and puzzle, right? That we're working through, that a lot of communities are working through. One of the things I think we shared in the last presentation is I've done a lot of work with other districts in the area, kind of understanding their plans, their variables. And what I will say is that every community is unique. They have a different set of circumstances that make certain things possible and not possible. And so I think as, as communities and as school districts continue to modify their plans, there's been quite a, quite a bit of change as districts have come up against variables that perhaps their local circumstance made challenging to work through. We've got an incredible team in District 200, not only the individuals that presented tonight, but our principals that have been hard at work in working through these opportunities, our staff and our union leadership and our, our teachers and staff members that have really helped us to, to work through these challenges and opportunities. And so what we bring to you and what we bring to the, to the community tonight is a plan that, that is still very much believe is doable for our students. that, that is still very much believe is doable for our students. It's provided them a choice, the virtual or in-person. Eighty percent of our families have indicated a desire for in-person, and we believe that we can do that consistent with all the safety guidelines that have been mapped out. We continue to, on a, on a daily and a weekly basis, we've continued to evolve or improve certain aspects of the, the planning that we've made as questions have been, have been raised, and I'm confident as we go into the school year, that that's going to continue, right? What we start with on day one, we will continue to, to make improvements and evolutions on. I think Mr. Long asked a question earlier to say what does happen if the entire system shifts into e-learning? It's entirely possible that data on a regional level, data on a state level, could move us at some point, right, back into that e-learning path, but we're ready. The fact that we have the Virtual Academy and we've got a format mapped out, I think would allow us to, to transition into that fairly easily. But I do want to acknowledge for the, the board that, you know, as we've shared with, with this piece, there, there are costs to being able to open up schools, right, in, in this way. You're going to approve a little bit later, a few things that are on the agenda that relate to personal protective equipment, we've lowered class sizes, that's going to bring additional staff into the fold. You allocated in your, your tentative budget at the last meeting, a million dollars into contingency to support this, and we're going to need every bit of that contingency as, as we work through it. But again, I believe this plan is worth the resource in the fact that it does provide that opportunity for the, the two paths. And so this is not easy, I get it, I hear the angst of, of parents and community members as they've wrestled with this choice, and, and we've had lots of requests for kind of, you know, à la carte options, and as I've said, not to, to make light of it, what we can't do unfortunately, is establish this as like a choose your own adventure book, right? We have to have a couple of defined paths so that we can, we can support those paths. So again, a, a huge debt of gratitude to those in the organization that I think have, have helped us to bring our, our plans to this point, and again, we're happy to continue answering any questions. But I just wanted to mention, I'm appreciative of the thoughtful support from the community, even if they've disagreed with the plan, they, they certainly have done it respecting the fact that this is, this is not an easy solution or situation.
Thank you Dr. Schuler. Questions or comments from board members?
All right. One, I am impressed, I am proud to be some small part of this district. To echo what Jeff said, the amount of emails we've received is amazing. I believe leadership and staff has listened, has read them. What I'm most proud of is we are able to offer choice. And it's not a choice for everyone, not variety, but two paths, two choices, and that's, that's something that is just very impressive to me personally. I have some tactical questions. One goes back to page four on the registration data. Right now, the updated data said we have about ninety-three percent of students registered. I was curious, is that, how does that compare to previous years? And then secondly, what are actions, you know, do, are we taking to kind of close that gap even further?
And so we are significantly ahead of where registration data would be in a, in a typical year. Part of that is because generally, registration does also involve the paying of fees, and we've not asked for, for fees to be collected, so, so we're actually significantly ahead of that registration curve. Julie Ozmkowski, who is our data whiz, has put together for each school, a roster of students that have not completed the registration process with all the necessary contact information, email, phone, text, so that we can continue to, to reach out to families. But, but again, at ninety-three percent now, we're, we're very close. It allows us to do the programming that, that we are, and, and our assumption at this point is if a family has not responded, we have defaulted them to the in-person option, because that's where it's most important for us to count maximum numbers for the purpose of class placements and, and those pieces. So we're still going to, going to close the gap, but truly at this point, we're, we're shifting probably more focus to continuing the tactical pieces of, of getting the, the schedule revised.
All right, thank you. This is very tactical, I didn't see it covered, but high schools and middle schools protocols for passing periods, longer periods, showing, you know, just the whole thing, have we talked through that?
Yeah. Dr. Kyler, Salagi, you guys have both been?
I know we talked about it, and the middle schools have talked about shortening it. Obviously, we're going to have directionals of where kids need to go. We want to make sure their exposure is less than fifteen minutes of six feet, you know, less than six feet apart, less than fifteen minutes. So we do look to still have the same passing periods, but with the hybrid model, remember it's cut in half, so half the kids are moving through the building. So we are working on direction, we are working on possibly shortening, I think the middle school talked about shortening it, having the kids go straight to school and sign, straight to class, then sign up for bathroom. There, there are a lot of different things that we're trying to do to make sure that the kids, the flow of traffic moves quickly.
What about high school? There's no way you can shorten that period for high school?
Not really, those buildings are pretty big.
But I do want to, want to mention or remind you that kids will not need to go to the lockers, they're going to be carrying their supplies with them. So that is going to, going to diminish some of the, the need that perhaps exists in a, in a passing period, because they're going to have all the supplies that they need.
And then incredible program, a lot to figure out and think through. One aspect that we may not work on yet, or I'm not sure where we're at on, is specifically arts in middle school and high school, band, orchestra, choir.
Yep. So Dr. Kyle has, has been working very closely with teams actually from all three of the programs, and they actually are, Mr. Hamlin, pretty far along in, in identifying their, their programming options. So just, just very simply, and Dr. Kyle tell me if I'm, if I'm wrong in this, orchestra, really no change, kids have their own equipment, as long as they have a mask, they can play inside of the building. Music, certain instruments can be played inside, certain instruments cannot be played inside of the, the building, and so our music programs have, have mapped out like a weekly schedule that would give an opportunity for every ensemble, I believe, to come together at least once outside, right, if it, if it's not possible inside. Same with choral music, so singing inside is a challenge, there's some rules that, that sit around that, some of it can happen in, in smaller groups, but again, our choral programs have looked at an opportunity to get the, the ensemble together outside of the, the building, and otherwise they're looking at some, some different opportunities. And so part of that honestly may be almost a, like, like a flipped model where a lot of the instruction is happening inside of the classroom, some of the play or the practice is going to have to happen outside of the classroom if it's an instrument that just can't be played inside of the building.
Thank you. Now when I think about the high school and middle school e-learning days versus Virtual Academy, are those the same experiences, different platforms, same platforms?
Yeah, no, it's a good question. So the high school, middle school, the synchronous day that Wednesday is going to be a very different experience, like live synchronous following classes. I believe what you're going to see at the middle and the high school is planning that's going to kind of work around like two-day chunks, right? So when, when the students are at home on the, the off day, recognize that the teachers are going to be in the classroom, working with the, the students that are inside of the building on that day, and so it's not going to be synchronous on that, that off day. Will be some, there may be some asynchronous experiences in, in that kind of flipped classroom idea, where perhaps students are, are watching the video or getting some, some instruction asynchronously, but, but that off day is not going to be a synchronous experience because the teacher's working with the other half of the students inside of the classroom.
So e-learning will not, will not use the Virtual Academy platform, would be different?
It will use a lot of the same tools, and again, if it, if, if the middle and the high school transition to a full e-learning, so what they use on the Wednesday platform, very similar, right, in terms of the, the tools and the opportunities, but what they use on, you know, the, the kind of paired days, very likely they're still going to be using a lot of the tools inside of the Google platform, right, Google Classroom and some of the collaborative tools for students to still be able to collaborate and, and do work, but I think you'll see on the off day, a lot more application of the learning or perhaps some of the asynchronous pieces, so. Mrs. Murphy, anything you want to add to that, you're working very closely with that team.
I thought you did a great job.
Then my last question has to do with accountability and compliance. You know, in the spring, we heard a lot of, you know, anecdotal stories about kids showing up, not showing up. Can we talk a little bit about that compliance with e-learning and Virtual Academy?
Yeah, especially within the, the Virtual Academy, so, so number one, I guess just, just important to note, we are assigning a dedicated administrator to oversee that, that program. So an administrator that's going to oversee all elementary, Virtual Academy is going to oversee all secondary, Virtual Academy. There are very specific expectations, as Mrs. Murphy went through, for like time allocations and what needs to be included in the, in the program, and what we're working with, the administrator on that's going to oversee that is an evaluation format in the, in that Virtual Academy program, so it's going to have to look different than what it looks like when you're inside of a building and a, and a, and a teacher has the, or administrator has the capacity to walk in and observe a classroom or oversee that, that work, but at the same time, because so much of it's happening virtually, you actually can get a very, very, you know, good glimpse into, to that piece, and I, what I would suspect as well, and expect, Rob, is that I believe that parents that have selected the Virtual Academy are going to bring a high degree of accountability to that program as well, right? I mean, they've, they've made that choice, they understand what's expected, and, and I'm fully confident that if those expectations aren't being met, that's going to bring a layer of accountability onto that as well, in addition to the, the work that we do to supervise, support, and, and help our teachers. And Melissa, it looks like you have one more, go ahead.
I'll just add on, in the slide deck, I also noted that we're going to put together a parent, really a parent-student handbook for that program, and so that will really outline the expectations as a part of the Virtual Academy as well.
Thank you, that's all my questions. Again, just fantastic job in such a short amount of time, and I'm proud to be a little part of the district.
Last thing, I just wanted to mention in that accountability space as well, because I think important to note, is that in the spring, a lot of the state guidance spent a lot more time telling school districts what, what they shouldn't do, right? What they should not do, right? Expectations around grading, that it not hurt, you know, kids where they are, don't, right, don't do too much of this, this, or this. The, the state guidance has notably flipped now to where it sets expectations around what you should do, both in terms of time for instruction, grading expectations, same as they would be inside of a building, accountability expectations, so that, that's a notable change even at the, the state level, that, that, I think that, that bar has raised, whether it's Virtual Academy or entire system.
Yeah, I've, I get a couple of comments. I'm a little concerned about the big picture, I think Dave may have touched on it briefly, one of his, one of his comments. I, I'm, I, I think we've done an outstanding job of getting ready to come back to school. You know, we've planned very well to, you know, protect the environment in which we're going to operate under. You know, my bigger concern is that, that outside of the school, which again, has to enter into the conversation. I believe that, you know, we, we may be in, in the state or in the country, literally entering into another phase of expanded COVID problems. I mean, Illinois, I think, was added again today as one of the states, which probably is forty of the fifty states, now has growing numbers of cases. And I wish we were talking about this today as though the numbers were going the other way, you know, that they were dropping, that, you know, we don't expect that this will be as bad as it might be going forward, and I think we are, we have that system in play. And I'm not convinced right now that, that we should be proceeding in the direction of reopening everything, like we are. I think that we, we can only control certain things. Obviously, those statistics I was just referring to are out of our control. I believe also that the, you know, I've seen, we can protect everyone as best we can in the building, but the minute they leave the building, we lose that control. You know, I, I drive by, you know, a school daily, and I see a lot of kids gathering, whether it's been, you know, training for a sport or whatever, and they're, they're gathering and there's, there's no mask, there's no separation. So that's going to, I, I know there's going to be outbreaks, and I, and I'm concerned that we're going to be a leader in that capacity if we reopen. I think that many of the districts around us are, are speculating on whether they should be doing that or not. You know, I, I know Plainfield, for instance, has already gone total virtual. I think Naperville is on the edge of doing that. I know Barrington is, is going totally virtual. So I, I, I understand all the economics and I, and I'm torn between this. I think some of the enrollment data, you know, I've talked to many parents about it, particularly at the elementary level, and I, and I think they're, they're concerned about, you know, the experience of e-learning. I think that last year, that experience varied greatly. In some cases, it was outstanding, in other cases, wasn't so outstanding. And so I think their, their mentality is it's going to be the same thing, and I don't think that'll be true. I think we're much better prepared to do the Virtual Academy than we, than we have in the past. So I, I just, you know, I, I'm just concerned. I think another reason that some of the parents, particularly at elementary, again, made the decision because they were concerned about, you know, when we come back, you know, I've got to commit for this trimester issue, and that trimester's a long time, and if, like, you know, if things change, I may not go to my home school. So, you know, I'm very concerned about that. I'm also concerned that the experience of school is going to be different. We're going to have kids in the, in the, in the classrooms that, I'm not going to call them robotic, but they're going to be in a, you know, maintained in a, a building with a mask on, with limited mobility. It's not going to be what we would call normal school. And, you know, so when they get out of that environment, they're going to want to, again, participate in, you know, what they think of interaction with others, and we're not going to be able to offer that interaction with others. So, you know, and I'm not saying that we have to, you know, permanently defer, I think we have a great program here, but I'd prefer to see this happen when the numbers go down, when we, we, and truthfully, I, I would like to see some other school district other than us be the, the leader in this, because I don't know who else is out there right now that's going to do it. Chicago hasn't made a decision yet, but, you know, I'm starting to feel like we're the only guy standing right now, and that, that's troubling, maybe there's others, but I'm seeing too many around us that are that way. And I understand that every district has a different capacity, different, you know, structures of, of students and so on, but, you know, in the big picture, we're, we're still dealing with the same issue, and it, it concerns me. I'm not totally convinced, to be truthful, but, you know, I'm struggling as though any other parent that we've been talking to, that we've been getting emails on, making that decision. And with everything going up, it's, it's really a problem for me right now, and I, I wish there was a way we could solve it, and the only way I feel we could solve it is by delaying the start of full-blown, you know, you know, in, in-person education. I'd rather not take that risk, so that's kind of my thoughts on it. You know, again, I, I don't know what else to say, that's pretty much it.
So I, I think you're, you're right about the emails and the concerns, we've heard a lot of that, but the, the way I think through it is, people do have a choice, right? They can do Virtual Academy, which is full-time remote, which would address that point, or they can engage, you know, in a, in a AB or elementary full-time. So I, I look at it because of the choice, and that, that's how, that's how I kind of deal with that, your point, right? Because we don't know, it is uncertain. I also don't have, don't have the expectation that it's going to be a hundred percent like it was two years ago, it just, there's going to be differences, right? So I don't have any expectation that it's going to be the same. I don't, I don't know if that's a valid expectation, but that is my expectation. But I, I do, I go, I come back to choice and the careful programming that we've gone through. So I would, my preference is, is a little bit in contrast here, is I'm glad we have a choice and glad we have this in-person option right now, right? With the, and we can always pivot back to a hundred percent Virtual Academy if we have to, right, if the indicators are there, but I would not want to proactively go there prior to school starting. Personal point of view.
Yeah, I think that, you know, the numbers may be there already, that's one of my Yeah, I think that, you know, the numbers may be there already. That's one of my points.
I hear you.
Secondarily, I think that, particularly at the elementary level, the people I've talked to have basically been concerned about e-learning in general. The experience last year varied greatly. And, you know, some was good, some wasn't. But the bigger problem, too, is what if November 1st, we have a cure and everything's done, okay? Then I'm still committed beyond that, which I understand why. Don't misunderstand that. But in addition, you know, then I may not go back to my home school. And so, all my friends and all my children's friends and so on, that they're used to being with are not going to be there. So, that's not going to be a good experience. So, I think some of the decisions that I, from people I talked to, felt like they were, you know, it wasn't a clear-cut decision. They struggled over it. And those were the two kind of overvalued things. And I, you know, I think, again, you know, we are super prepared for this. But, you know, I just, I'm more concerned with that bigger picture of whether we're getting there. And I just don't feel comfortable that everybody's moving, you know, we're seeing too many people changing their mind now. And we, I guess we have that opportunity to change our mind. If the statistics keep getting worse, you know, we, we've extended this, you know, start period. We'll have another board meeting in between. But there's so much planning, and so many things that go on, you know, that's going to be a problem. So, I guess, you know, I just, you know, I don't know where we should start. And if we were going, if the statistics were going a different way, and every, every state in the country wasn't a red hotspot, you know, I'd feel much better about this. But the numbers are going the way, maybe this is the second wave, beginning of the second wave. I don't know that. And that concerned me. So, you know, if we're going to start this, and we do it for two weeks, you know, baseball, started it, and, you know, here we go already, you know. So, I mean, I don't know, and I don't want to be in that circumstance. So, I'd rather be more prepared to move forward with the, you know, and again, our teachers are concerned about it. You know, I, you know, I'm getting, I'm reading so much about it, you know. And I'm not reading the emails, to be truthful. I'm gathering what I can from people I know. I'm not, emails to me are informational, but they're written by someone who has a real strong vested interest. And Facebook, I don't even look at, to be truthful. So, you know, I'm trying to talk to community members I know and listen to what their concerns are. And, you know, there's, those are the ones I'm hearing. And I'm, you know, it's caused me to vacillate a bit. And, you know, and I hate to say how much work we've done, and how well-prepared we are to proceed, but is that, I'm asking the question, is that the right thing to do?
It's a, sorry, one thing, Jenna.
Yep.
I get back to, I think about myself, or how do I empathize, put myself in other people's shoes, right? And if, my kids passed all the way through CSD 200, fantastic experience. But if I had to make the choice today, I'd want a choice, right? I would not want to have, I would not want to be limited to one thing right now. I just, there's too much, I have too many varied emotions about in-person versus virtual, right? So, personally, I would want a choice. And I feel that we're offering a choice. And that gives me some solace in anxiety. And I share, I get it, right? I totally get it. I empathize with the emails and the people. But when you have a choice, that is a good thing, in my opinion.
Yeah, I just hope that in two weeks or three weeks, we're not in a different boat.
Understood, yeah.
That's the biggest concern I have, because that we have to prepare for. So.
I have a comment and a question. So, my comment would be that my sense is that we should be looking at the way the registrations have come in as an indicator of how parents are feeling. We've seen a very strong percentage that has signed up for in-person. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean they're 100% comfortable with it, but it does mean that those parents are weighing the option. And as Rob said, they're making a choice, and they're, that's what they've chosen for whatever reason that is. I wonder, can you share with us the conversations that are going on about what the criteria would be to make us decide to step back? And does it mean the entire district steps back and goes all remote? Would it ever be one school at a time? Would we ever have a situation where we would step back with the majority of our students, but allow any subsets to continue in-person? We've seen a lot of guidance that says it's especially important for students with IEPs, students who are English learners, and various other groups, that having them in school is especially important. Would we ever allow them to continue in-person while everybody else kind of took a step back?
Yeah, so I guess I'm going to address the first question, which is kind of the indicators, right? So, notable difference now over where we sat in March, right? At the point in March in which we made a decision to suspend in-person instruction, right, for students. Statewide, there was no plan. There was no common set of metrics that defined where we are. So, we've seen some comment from parents about, gosh, our data now is, is, you know, to some degree, is at or worse than the data was in March. But we were also dealing with a different set of information, right, that we had at that point in March. So, the state now has a model and a tracking system that looks at data by region. And there are some markers that could take a region entirely back, a phase in that reopen plan. And bottom line is, if we step back into Phase 3 of the Reopen Illinois Plan, then instruction is not in-person, right? At that point, students go back to virtual. A decision to perhaps take a step back, like at one individual facility, would likely happen in consultation with the DuPage, wouldn't, would not, shouldn't say likely, would happen in consultation with the DuPage County Health Department. Because again, in either an individual case, or perhaps a cluster of cases, they're the local entity with the authority and the guidance to tell us, hey, we should perhaps consider shutting down a school, right, for a window of time. And so, that would happen with the DuPage County Health Department. Twice a week, I'm in conversations with the Health Department and all of the area superintendents, really understanding the health data, understanding where it sits within a region. And I think to Jim's point, right, there are some markers that data's trending up, right, a little bit. And where that will be two weeks from now, I don't know, right? Where it sits right now. And I agree with you, where we sit, especially with that registration data. And knowing we have a plan that does meet the safety requirements, I'm comfortable this is the right plan right now. If that changes in two weeks, we'll pivot. We need to pivot. But right now, still very much believe this is the plan, and we can hit those markers. And there are some big system tracking metrics that may in fact tell us if we need to pivot.
Is it, would there ever be a scenario where the decision would come, we've just got too many kids in the building, too much interaction, but we can serve some of our population in-person?
It's possible, I suppose. I think the one piece that I guess I would say is that the standards that sit on top of safe operation are standards that speak to number of kids in any one place. And then distancing, right? Your ability to provide students with distance in the classroom. So, I think if we step back, so back to even, you know, Phase 3 of the Reopen Illinois Plan, there were some stipulations even in Phase 3 that would allow perhaps some targeted service of students that perhaps had a designated or a specific need that you could do. But also then the metrics around how many kids can be in any one, how many people can be in one space, step back to 10 with some other stipulation. So, possible, possible. But I would tell you that, you know, I think especially with numbers that are going to come out for Virtual Academy, we have the ability to achieve that spacing need within our buildings.
Um, I have a reaction to another one of Jim's comments, which is very true, that we have no control once people leave our buildings. And my sense is of the parents sending their kids to school, there's some, some portion of that group that is sending them trusting that we have safeguards in place and that, you know, who feel like there are concerns, but feel like we can cover the safety issues. And there is, quite frankly, a population of people who just aren't that concerned about it, and they're going to send their kids to school because their concern level is not that high. But it makes me wonder if there's a way to do extra communication with the families that are coming for in-person instruction, not unlike what we do historically with our athletes, where parents come to a meeting. And I don't know how many of those I sat through, where the athletic director was talking specifically to the parents, saying, "Parents, we need you on board to help your student uphold the athletic honor code." And all of the things that you're supposed to do as an athlete, so that you are allowed to participate. And the same kind of thing comes into play here. It should be obvious, but I don't think it is a bad thing to throw some guidance out there that says, "Please, if you are sending your children to in-person instruction, we want you to be very mindful that your student affects the health of others." And so, you know, again, we want to ask people that they're careful about what they're doing in their off-hours, what they're having their children do. The guidance on decide who your bubble is and try to stay within that. Every family's going to do it differently, but I think it's worth a public service announcement, so I'm sorry.
It's a great, it's a great point. I think, actually, the high school's right. The code, the idea around community is so strong and so important, so much emphasized. I think that's a great vehicle to keep that message going. It's a great point.
So, IDPH has come up with the guidelines for us to open. We have followed those guidelines to open. I think as we watch numbers, we rely on our health professionals to help us make those decisions. And if the DuPage County Health Department is not saying, "Go to remote learning yet," and we're following all the guidelines that the state is putting out for us, I think we have to listen to that, as well as, as Jenna said, our registration numbers as well. You know, our community is asking us to offer these in-person as well. We're following the health guidelines to try to keep everybody safe as possible over doing that. And I think we have to, we have to listen to those people who are those health professionals. I do have a few other just questions, general questions. You know, one of the things that's coming to mind is being a teacher. And I'm thinking at the elementary level, I'm thinking at the middle school level, high school, I think it's a little bit different. You know, we could be coming back in, all of us in its entirety at some point, or some phasing in and some phasing out at different points. Are we developing pacing guides at elementary and middle to ensure that when we do have those transition points, our students are coming in about at the same point?
So, we've spent, we have a significant number of teachers this summer working on committees at the elementary and middle school level to look at our current pacing guides and make adjustments and recommendations to those. So, there's been significant amount of time spent on pacing guides to address this year.
Couple more quick questions. For, for a way to help our staff, for things like building meetings, grade level meetings, are we giving them the flexibility of doing those virtually, so that we're not putting large groups of staff together in situations?
Yeah, wait, that's not, not a choice, right? No more than 50 individuals that are going to be in a space. And so, many of the traditional approaches to faculty meetings, to different types of organizational events have to change. So, we've worked with them considerably on rethinking that.
So, two more questions. The Virtual Academy administrators, are we looking at those as new hire positions? Are we moving, thinking of moving teachers with certification into those positions?
We anticipate adjusting some administrative positions.
Okay. And then one more. I've been thinking about the middle school passing period and the ability to clean the desks. And, you know, I'm thinking, I know the Monroe Hallways very well. You can go from one classroom, and then you're going to the room right next to you, and with a three-minute passing period, and the congregation sitting out there and trying to get desks cleaned in the meantime, and kids standing out in the hallway. I just, I know that it's, I know that's still under the 15 minutes or what the guidelines are, but I just feel like, is there a plan? And is there hallway monitoring abilities to be able to kind of keep track of the middle school kids?
Yeah, yes, to the first part. So, again, the way that that protocol's been developed, students will be cleaning out on a desk. And so, as they leave that room, the room is ready for the next group of students to come in. So, we designed that protocol for that very reason, that if you, if you did anything that like caused you to have kids kind of backed up at the door as they're coming into a classroom, that's where you're going to, you're going to get that. If you clean out of a room, so you ensure as students leave, every desk and surface has been sanitized, then it's ready as the next group of students come in.
All right, one more, one more question. I'm thinking, so again, middle school and high school bathrooms, are all of our bathrooms going to be open? And I'm just thinking of monitoring, are we going to kind of contain that a little bit more?
Yes. And I guess bathrooms may be open, but there's some spacing taking place within bathrooms. So, stalls and urinals that will not be in use to provide spacing and distancing.
Thank you.
Dave and Susan? So, you know, I, after sitting through tonight, I first of all, recognize all the work. But I feel a lot better about the back-in-school plan. You know, there's a lot of, there's still a lot of, I guess, unanswered questions and some uneasiness. But a lot of that feels better to me, having seen it. And, you know, and it's been clear in all the discussions we've had over the summer, and hearing from, you know, Susan, sitting on the reopening committee, that just about every question that's come up, there's, if there's not an answer, it's been thought about, and it's on a punch list. It might not all be answered. So, I do feel a lot better about all of that. You know, to Jim's point about the rising numbers, I don't know how to feel about that, because, you know, I mean, we're seeing, what, 30 or 40 more cases per day than we actually had when the decision was made to close schools? You know, because at that point, there was only like 46 cases in the state, but we closed the schools. But because the projections were that things were going to explode, and they did, we're not really hearing anything about those expectations, at least I'm not. And so, to me, I don't know whether to be concerned about 1,200 or 1,300 cases a day right now. Yeah, it's inched up a little bit, but it, you know, are people going to now get a little better in their behavior, and it's going to come back down? And is that an acceptable level? I don't know. But just my point being, you know, there's nobody saying in the media or anything that I'm seeing, that 1,300 is going to go to 5,000 a day in Illinois again. So, I don't know how to feel about that. Obviously, if we knew that, that would be a different decision. Because I am concerned about, I mean, I do like the choice, and the fact that the kids have choice. But I am concerned that we get all the way down that path, we hire all these teachers, and then we go remote, and we've spent maybe some money we might not have otherwise spent on hiring additional staff. So, I am a little concerned about that. And for staff, I'm a little concerned, too. I know the union's been involved, but, you know, we've talked about the choice, but the teachers don't really have a choice. And so, I'm a little concerned, just some of the stuff I'm hearing and seeing and reading, I don't know if, you know, where they are in all of this. And so, I know there is an element of them that have some fear and some concern. And I know that's being considered, but I just had to say that. And then I do have a couple of questions. For elementary, I'm just having a little trouble getting my head around the space issue, because we're going to have significantly less class size, but the same number of kids in the school. So, how, and I know some of it is going to be some areas. We talked about these resource rooms. But how is that working?
So, you actually won't have the same number of kids in the building. So, recognize all those students for the Virtual Academy are backed out. So, virtually, all of our elementary schools have anywhere between, you know, on the low end, 50 to 60 students to some almost 100 students that are backing out for the Virtual Academy. So,
That's part of it.
That's how you're lowering the sections, is basically by keeping all of the sections we would have allocated with our kind of traditional.
Yep.
class-sized targets, but just allowing them to come out as the virtual academy students are, are backed out in there. And candidly, in some cases, we're adding sections still, right?
Okay, that's, that's a good point. The other, one of the other questions I had was just on the chemicals. Everything that you guys presented tonight referenced EPA.
Mm-hmm.
Not really sure what that means. You know, in, in a lot of these emails, there's a lot of speculation about availability of supply and, you know, do we know what we're getting and stuff being, what, so I'm not sure that the supply issue is a real valid concern. I'm guessing we have good contacts and, and good ways to get that. But what does the EPA reference mean?
It just means that it's on an, on an EPA-approved list as a, as a product that is safe to use inside of a school building. So there are a couple of different criteria that a product has to go through in order to be on that, that safety list. So
So any concern that somebody might have about it being higher alcohol or just some, you know, there's actually some stuff that's almost
And Mr. Robinson, who really oversees the, the work and the selection of all those cleaning products, works with Suvasco, our district nurse, to ensure that every product that we're using meets that, that safety protocol.
Okay. And then I have two more. On the symptoms, I mean, like, you know, so it's going to be allergy season in August and September. If you have a, the way I understood it, if you have a runny nose, you're out of school for, for 10 days. You have to be symptom-free for, I think it was 10 days? Is that right?
Yeah. So a couple of things on there. Number one, if you look in the back of your, your green folder, there is a, a flow chart that, let me find it.
This exclusion guidance?
Yes, thank you. By, by the IDPH. So if you look on a couple of columns on that flow chart, it does reference other, other issues, right, that a, that a student may go to see a doctor for, and or other, other issues. So there, it, it does not mean one runny nose for a student that is a known allergy sufferer, that they're quarantined for, for 14 days, right? Like even at the, the staff level, we've had a lot of conversation with the health department about what do you do in, in situations where, you know, somebody is a, is a known allergy sufferer and it's a runny nose. I know it's allergies, right? I know that, that symptom. And, and so there, there's the ability to work within our, with our health department, right, around that. We'll have that conversation immediately, right, to ensure, Dave, but, but we've had that question from staff as well to, to say you, you know those symptoms, what you're looking for in that symptom checklist is something that's not, not a, not a persistent, regular symptom you see.
Okay. And, and if you, if you are out quarantined or whatever the right term is because of symptoms, are you out of school? Are you doing e-learning while you're home?
Yeah, you, you would, you would be supported then through your, your classroom teacher. So in the same way now, we have students that are out of, of school for a period of time for a medical
Yep.
reason, and, and we support them through their, their classroom teacher, providing the, the work, providing, you know, the instructional pieces. And then we also have a window of time where we provide homebound, right, tutoring support that shows them. So we would not slide that student over into virtual academy because that's an entirely different
Okay.
class and different, different teacher. But we would support a student that's out of school for a window of time through their classroom teacher.
So they'd be doing the e-learning, obviously, the two days they would have, the two days they'd be in the building, they'd be doing other things supported by the teacher. And then my last question is just on, there's, you know, a lot of comments about the half-days, you know, we've gone to the full days twice a week. And did we consider half-days for four or five days as opposed to, you know, the, the A-B schedule we have now?
Yeah. So just for, for clarity, when you're talking about half-day, you're talking about like, like the A-group is there in the morning and the B-group's there in the afternoon?
Yes.
From that? Yeah. We, we did, we did have that conversation. I want to recognize that that doubles your transportation cost daily, right? Because you're still running every route. You're running it twice every day, right? As you bring in the group, you take them home, you bring in the group, you, you take them home. And so I think what you, you get is the same aggregate amount of time of instruction, right, in, in that model, but you're putting money into transportation cost. I'd rather put money, if we have to put money into, to the plan, if we're investing, I'd rather invest in teachers and in additional instructional support rather than invest in transportation costs. To, to double your route to just middle and high school, you, you would, you would be, you would be a couple million dollars
Yep.
a year easily. You'd, you'd exceed what, what are your, your staff ed costs. And I guess the last piece that I'll say, which is important to, to note, right? So, you know, go all the way back to, to those of you that were on the board at the, at the window of time where the district entered into the, the ELO agreement, right, the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, right, which was all about creating virtual or digital learning opportunities at the high school, right, online, right, classes. That online-blended experience has been a regular part of the instructional conversation at the middle and the high school for a while, right? We've recognized that as actually a model that has some good practice and benefit when you look at some of those blended courses. That's the reason in our high schools why we have blended course opportunities now in existence. We've never contemplated blending a second-grade classroom, right? Just the, the instructional needs, the instructional model is different, right? What kids can do independently is different, right? And so, so I think that's the last part of that, Dave, and kind of settling on that model, is that, that, you know, well, of course, we'd rather see our students five days a week. If we could see them five days a week, I think that model makes more sense at the, at the middle and high school, right, as you look at that, that full-day rotation versus, you know, coming in the morning or coming in the afternoon for either a really compressed schedule or like half your schedule each day.
Okay, thank you.
I, you know, being on the core team, I, it's been amazing to see what's been going on behind the scenes and the amount of work and to Dr. Schuler and the senior leadership team. I mean, it, it's really stunning. It's stunning what, what they're doing in such a short amount of time, but also in a lot of time. This, this planning started in May. And I think that really shows Dr. Schuler's leadership of grasping the situation and how are, how are, you know, powering forward. How are we going to do this? We're, we're going to figure it out. And I think they have. And Jim, to your point, I, I don't think, and I'm, I'm certainly not trying to speak for anybody here, but I, I would be shocked if any of the seven of, seven of us sitting here haven't had the thoughts that you've had. I know especially over the last week, as we started getting all of these emails. And, and I, I have read them all and it's, it's very difficult. You know, it's a very difficult situation. And, but I think, you know, and I, you know, I'm thinking of this through a parent lens too. I have a seventh grader and a ninth grader. And I, I do feel though that, as Chris said, we have 80% of our community saying we want to send our kids to school in some capacity. And I think if we can figure out how to do that in the guidelines, to Rob's point, we should offer that choice. And to those who are uncomfortable with that for any reason, have a fully online opportunity that they can still learn and be a part of our school community. I, I am, you know, to Dave's point, I am certainly concerned for our teachers. I think, I think we're, I think my, I'll be honest, my frustration for teachers lies at a larger level that, not District 300, but I think the amount that the public school system in general in our country is having to shoulder right now in this pandemic is very difficult. And I, that's where my frustration and anger lies for teachers right now, that it's really shined a light on some, on things that, that teachers have had to put up with for a very long time. And, and they're being put in that position again. But I, but I do want to say, Jim, to your point too, I, I agree with you that the classrooms, I had that concern early on when we started talking about elementary classrooms not being able to have rugs and bean bags and reading chairs. And that's what makes elementary classrooms special, you know, and makes a young child go in, wow, look at all these colors, look at all these fun places to sit. And, but at the same time, we're in a different time. We're in an unprecedented, unprecedented time right now. I know us as a family, we have sat down with our kids and prepared them for what the classroom is going to look like, that it's going to look a lot different than what they have known in the past. And, and they were part of our decision to, to, you know, what choice we made as a family. And I think that's really important. And to your point, I think parents are preparing their kids for that. And especially seeing the pictures now, and we can put those out there and parents can show their kids, this is what your classroom is going to look like now. And, you know, I think people in general have gotten used to wearing masks. Kids are used to seeing other kids with masks on and, and playing with kids with masks. And, and I, I think our kids are going to surprise us and be more resilient than what we believe they can do. And, and that is what has helped me sleep at night. And because it's hard, you know, it's hard. And I mean, we're, we're all parents here and, you know, I, it's, it's just a difficult situation. And I just want to come back to you, I just, you know, Dr. Schuler and the, the leadership team, I mean, it's just really been amazing. And I, I think you've made some very difficult choices and decisions and, but you've, you've stuck to it and you've figured it out. And I, I appreciate that very much as, as a board member and as a parent of this district. I do have, having said all that, I do have some tactical questions too that I just wanted to, to clear up. It's, a lot of them actually were asked and, and answered. Let me just look here really quick. One question I had from last time that with airflow and HVAC systems and our, all of our work that we've been doing on our buildings over the last couple of years, is there, do you see any need for any of our buildings to have the HVAC work like moved up or, you know, anything that needs to be done sooner than what we were planning? Is there, has that come up at all? And I don't even know that that would be possible, but I'm just curious from, you know, our building plan, is there anything there that, you know, has come up?
So again, the, right now, JR and team are, are working through to make sure that every system is, is working in the way that, that it needs to. Like, like some of the major controls work that's coming up, that's going to happen, wouldn't be able to happen now between now. But, but again, that's not so much the flow of the system itself as much as just, you know, the, the automated operation of it. And, and a lot of the automated operation is, is kind of designed to work almost in the opposite of this situation where we're going to be making some non-energy efficient decisions for the purpose of simply running systems longer, circulating more air, running set points, temperature set points lower for, for comfort. So again, you know, everything that Colin Wilkie has spent, JR, I don't know, 10 years working on, right? Like, we're, we're going to undo a lot of that in a short term this year because we're, we're consciously making some decisions to run less energy efficient for the purpose of hitting all of the markers that have been set in the, the reopening guidelines for airflow, for temperature controls, candidly for opening windows. We would normally not advise opening windows because it, it messes with the automation in the system, but, but the goal is, is to, to get as much external air as you can circulating.
Thank you. And I think most of my questions, like I said, were answered. One question I had at this semester, let's say, like we were talking about how many kids are in a classroom. And I, I guess this would be at all levels. If for some reason, let's say, half of the virtual academy students at semester said, "I want to come back. I'm ready to come back." Would we be in a position where if, let's say, we're still under these guidelines, that we may have to be like, "You can't because we don't have space?"
Um, no, I guess hard to, hard to say that. And I, and I think the most, the most difficult thing in answering those, you know, questions like that from parents about return to either their homeschool or school is that we are largely speculating what the conditions will be at the point in which that decision is made. And, and I, and I don't, I don't know. If, if a lot of kids back out of the virtual academy, candidly, what it might mean is we have to do some reorganization within the virtual academy and perhaps like, you know, relook at the, the allocation of the, the use of staff as we come back into a building. But, but again, you know, I could be wrong, but, but my assumption is that if there are lots of students that are navigating back into our buildings from the, the virtual program, candidly, unless it's that because we, we did not do a, a good job in the virtual academy, which I don't think that will be the, the case, I think the, the reason that's largely going to drive that are conditions improving. Conditions improving likely shift some of the, the expectations and restrictions inside of a building, which, which will likely make it easier to accommodate that transition back.
Thank you. I think, thank you.
Couple of quick items just to follow up on a few things. Number one, I think that, you know, the choices we had, and I, I love the choice issue, but, you know, we had 75% of the elementary decide to do in-person. I think there's a group somewhere between 0 and 30%, I don't know what number it is, that are by default are going to say, "I'm going to go to school." There's no, you know, "I don't want to wear a mask. I don't, I really think this is any big deal." And that group is included in the ones that are coming back. So I, I think it's somewhat misguided. There's no choice C. You know, "I don't care." You know, that kind of thing. So I, I think that's important, but, you know, so I don't overemphasize that 75. 75 to me, we were thinking it was going to be 80, or, you know, 80%. And 5% is a big swing. And I, just from talking to people, I think some of the reasons they chose were this, but in addition, there's all that group that doesn't care. But, and I wish I saw more students surround, you know, particularly high schools where I'm seeing it, that aren't wearing masks, aren't doing anything, and they're not social distancing after and out of school. You know, obviously, they're not in school now. And that concerns me. But I think we need to continually think about this thing. Because I, I do, I think times can change in the next two weeks before we start. I think I would like to, if you could, in your Friday notes, maybe give us an indication of what schools are leaning which way. Because I don't want to be the only island in the stream. It's, you know, and I feel like we're heading that way right now. And I, and I, and there's a reason for that, some, whatever it is. And, and I don't want to get in that, maybe we're just better prepared. Maybe our buildings accommodate that better. You know, but, you know, I don't, there's a reason that all the other districts are making decisions that might be different than what we're doing. So all I can ask is that we continue, I'm, I'm trying to represent that group of people that have been concerned about this. And I, you know, I'm not sure that I don't agree with every other one of the comments you've made. But I, I think we need to give that due consideration so that we're representing and giving that thought. Because I was listening to the questions that went around. All the questions basically related to how are we going to keep the room clean? How are we going to keep the kids separated? You know, the, I don't think that's the big question. I think the big question is what happens if? And, you know, and, and that's the one that concerns me the most. So, you know, I, I look forward to us continuing to watching that and, and see where we end up. But, you know, I hope I'm wrong. You know, I guess is my concern. I hope my concerns are wrong. That's the bottom line.
Sorry, I got a little bit of stuff in just
Yeah, go ahead.
But, but I don't want to leave the impression that we're not listening to the folk, the other percent, right?
Right.
That's why there's a choice. That's all I want to, that, that to me is the most, that's why, that's the most important part, that we are listening to, to the entire community. And we are giving people a choice to be in-person or be completely remote. And that's just the most important part, why I'm so proud of the plan. I think secondly, I think it's good to, to take indicators from other districts. It's good to keep, you know, hear what's going on. But Aubrey community is different as well, right? And Avery community has different points of view and opinions. And, you know, I, I do care about what other people are doing, but I'm most focused on what our community is saying to us and, and, and just make sure we listen to them. I think the third point, which I was going to save it, but I'll say it now, and it's, it's about school community. school community. Um, there's going to be a policy conversation tonight where wearing a mask basically is not an option. You will, you will wear, there's some consideration and we'll cover it. But being part of a school community means whether you believe in it or not, you're going to comply and you're going to be part of a community and respect your community. And I think that's, that's the key. That is definitely, I mean, to Jenna's point, um, and we can, we can't control what goes on outside of school. But I think the messaging, which I think was Jenna's point, is when you're part of a community, whether you're in school or out of school, you respect the community. And you, you practice things you may not be 100% aligned to, but because you're part of the community and you want to protect your community, meaning the, you're going to, you're going to do things to, in that best interest of that community. So we have to trust that to a certain extent as well, right? And, and, um, we can't guarantee it, but I think we have to trust it. So enough of that. I appreciate your conver, I appreciate the conversation.
I agree. And that's really what we're here for.
Right.
All right. So I just have, I guess, three really quick personal observations. First off, from the safety standpoint and what we're doing in our buildings. I have a pretty good window into what businesses are doing, what other governments, park districts, other school districts are doing. We are doing all the right stuff from a cleaning standpoint, from a, a physical or social distancing standpoint, from capacity analysis, from one-way hallways, um, ventilation systems. We're, we're doing all the right stuff. There's nothing we haven't considered in this plan that is like a, a, um, a miss based on whatever, what I'm seeing across a variety of different, uh, kind of government and business entities. So I'm comfortable that we're, we're covering all those boxes. Uh, Jim, to your point about all the other school districts around us, you know, I'm paying attention to a lot of those school districts. I think the ones that are moving to remote learning, uh, get all the, get all the attention in the newspaper. Um, I know what's going on around us and I, I'm not ready to accept that, you know, everybody around us is going remote. Now, that might change in the next couple of weeks. Um, and as Dr. Schuler said, you know, every community, every school district has very unique circumstances. And if you look at those that are in the media, they have very unique circumstances that are very different from our, than our school community. And the other thing to, I guess Susan's point is we've been working on this a long time. Um, and we've been planning for this in advance. And I know some of those other school districts maybe haven't been preparing as much as we have in advance and our media is ready. So, so I have a little bit of comfort i- in that. And, and so I'm not predicting what's going to happen in the future, but in terms of what right now, I don't know, I don't know that everybody's going remote learning.
I, I don't disagree with that. I, I think we have to be aware of it. And, and, you know, again, I'm just trying to make sure we're considering the alternative. That's all I'm trying to get at tonight, is that we, we can't only look at it one way. We have to give that possible consideration based on, but changing, I think we've already changed in two weeks that we met, two weeks ago. You know, we've changed our model. We've changed the days we're going. We've changed other things too. So I think there's flexibility in these. And, you know, that's all I think we need to be considering all the time is that flexibility.
And then, and then the, I guess the third point is really just a personal observation. I, I, I worry and I observe that so much of the, uh, emotion that goes into what we're seeing and hearing is not based on what's happening here. It's what we're hearing, you know, in other states and through the media and stuff like that. And if you, I'm, I'm more focused on what's happening in DuPage County. And, you know, to, to your point, Dr. Schuler about the DuPage County Health Department and what their response is. And I'm actually looking at the, the COVID chart on the DuPage County dashboard. And if you look at the last week, it's very encouraging what's happening in DuPage County. So, you know, we've got another three, four weeks here before school is scheduled to start. And I'm, I'm trying to be careful and I kind of localize my emotions of what we're seeing versus what we're hearing kind of outside of, outside of our little school community. So just an observation from that point. So any other quick comments? We have a couple, six action items here before we close tonight. So, so great job, Dr. Schuler and staff. Thanks, uh, thanks for the update. You know, this was a meeting that we added for this particular purpose to, to not only get ourselves more comfortable with our plans, but for the, I'm sure many people on YouTube that are listening to us. Um, so we have six action items. Uh, this was supposed to be a committee to hold, but, but just because of time and the need to do stuff, we have added some action items on our agenda tonight, which are essential. So the first action item is approval of the Third Amendment to the lease agreement for the transition program. The information, Dr. Schuler?
I think everything was included in the, the piece. We're simply procuring a little bit of additional space in the, in the transition building to give us the ability to make sure we can physically distance.
Any questions from board members? Okay. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the Third Amendment to the lease at the once, I'm sorry, 100 Bridge Street location for the transition program as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Crabtree?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Erickson. Ms., Ms. McConaughey, would you please call a roll?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So the action item has passed to approve the amendment for the lease at the transition program. Second, uh, action item is approval of a resolution on emergency expenditure of funds for safety equipment purchase. Information, Dr. Schuler?
Yeah. So the, uh, the background on this is obviously we're, we're preparing for the purpose, uh, the purchase of, uh, our PPE. Uh, the amount of that purchase will exceed the typical threshold for that product going out to bid, but we don't have time to work through a public bid process on that. And so this resolution allows us to proceed with making that, that purchase to ensure obviously we have it on hand for the, the start of the year. Um, I will note, uh, that anytime that, uh, we are seeking or using an exception to that public bidding process, we do procure multiple, uh, quotes on that. So we don't just go to one vendor and, and use that. We've, uh, we've secured multiple quotes to ensure that, um, we're, we're in an acceptable price range. Some of the PPE as well, um, Mr. Farley has noted is, uh, available through some of the purchasing cooperative, uh, pieces. So that allows us to benchmark that, that price as well. So there's some board comfort that we're not expending funds. We don't need to expend.
Any questions or comments from board members?
I, I have a question. In terms of masks, are we purchasing any that are clear for some of our population that maybe our younger population, um, some of our, maybe our special education, ELP pop, for the teachers to be able to, for them to see faces a little bit more?
Um, we're, we're procuring some face shields that can be used in, in specialized locations. I will tell you that whole area of even the clear mask, I'm aware of one clear mask, but there's still some question as to whether it actually meets the criteria of the, the face covering that we're required to provide for, uh, for everybody. So we have not procured any of the masks that have a clear piece, but Charlie, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm working with a special ed with the PPE. So there are some clear masks for some special ed and speech, uh, pathologists that are working with kids to see their lips moving. So we have ordered some for students, specific students and specific staff. So we have ordered some PPE with clear masks.
Thank you, Charlie.
Okay. Please sample.
No, actually what I'm, what I'm wearing is the sample of the, the mat knot with this design. So the design will be logoed to each individual building, but, uh, Erica can comment on that.
The ones on the table are also samples. They're just the various sizes. So, um, the masks, um, have polyester outside fabric, inside fabric is cotton. Um, the masks will be, the design will be fully sublimated, which means, um, the logo will be a part of the fabric. So each school will have a different, the color of their masks and the school logos will be on each school mask. Um, there is an adjustable nose piece, um, on the inside of the mask so that you can pinch it down. Um, and then also the ear loops are adjustable, um, as well, so that various size faces can fit it.
Any other questions from board members? Okay. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution on emergency spending as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booton. Seconded by Mr. Hamlin. Mrs. McConaughey, would you please call a roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. The, uh, resolution on emergency, emergency spending has been, has been approved as presented. Uh, the third is approval of edgenuity courseware for the virtual academy.
Yeah, I think we've talked about this quite a bit through the, the virtual academy. This is the, the supplement for some of our specialized courses.
Questions from board members on that? Okay. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the edgenuity soft, uh, courseware subscription as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Erickson?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Crabtree. Mrs. McConaughey, would you please call a roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. That, uh, approval of the edgenuity courseware subscription has been approved. Number four is approval of a revision to the 2020 dash 2021 school calendar. I'm sure there's some information on this, Dr. Schuler?
Uh, so, uh, Dr. Kyle, uh, has been working with the, the calendar committee on this. And actually this discussion started out of our core team and a number of our planning teams that candidly were putting the details together, uh, around what needs to happen to be ready to, uh, to adjust all of our master schedules and, uh, and, and have school, uh, ready to operate. And, and candidly, um, w- we were simply going to run out of time with an August 17th, uh, target, which was our, uh, original start date. And so, uh, out of the, the core team and a number of our planning teams, we asked the calendar committee to come together and look at a, at a revised, um, calendar. They also did need to, uh, to make some changes that had brought the calendar committee together anyway because of a change to election day and, uh, and those pieces. Um, I, I do want to note for the board that, uh, last year, when the state of Illinois moved to remote learning, there were some additional remote learning planning days that were given to school districts if they needed to, to use them for the purpose of instructional planning, that those opportunities extended into this year. So the, the state board extended the, the use of those remote learning planning days. And so you'll also note in the revised calendar that, uh, two remote learning planning days have been added, one, uh, right before the start of school. We would typically only have one institute day with our, our staff, and then they have a workday to get their physical spaces, uh, set up. And so that adds a second, uh, planning day or, or not planning day, but an institute day, um, with our staff. And then we've added one, uh, a little bit later, uh, in the fall that, uh, uh, that we think will be important and necessary as well as we, we progress through the, the year. So those are the ma- major changes that we would be moving back, uh, the start, uh, by a week and a day, uh, to that Tuesday, uh, the, the 25th. Um, practically, and, and we know and, and recognize this, we did a ton of work in the calendar to bring that semester to end before winter break. When we move back by a week, that, that's not going to be an option. That would really imbalance the, the semesters significantly. And, um, I, I recognize how much went in, especially, you know, with, uh, with the heavy interest of the board in us making that, uh, that adjustment. But, um, uh, again, we, we just, we need to do what we need to do to get the schools ready to, to open. I do also, last thing I just want to mention on this is, uh, our typical calendar approval process would involve us putting this calendar on display for a month for, for community input. Again, just practically where we are right now, uh, that, that's, that's not an option. We need to make this approval and, uh, and share it with the, the community. I will tell you this, that, uh, uh, back to the conversation from a little bit earlier around, uh, a lot of districts, um, there, there are a lot of school districts that are making this decision, just recognizing the need to delay that start of school to, uh, to get a little bit of extra time to finalize details of planning.
Questions or comments?
Are we?
Go ahead.
Are we getting five days again this year? Cause I see there's two in the calendar. Are we looking to hold three more just in case?
We would have the capacity to utilize three more should we need them. And, and I will tell you that the, the calendar committee, uh, to, to their credit and the way we want them to, to operate, right? They, they've, they've said, we, if, if we need to use more, let's wait until the need presents itself that we can articulate, not just simply plan five days into the calendar because the state says we can.
So if it, okay. So then I'm just thinking, so if we did not choose to use them, we would just keep the calendar as is. We wouldn't back, take them off the back?
Correct.
Okay.
Just to be, uh, clarify, so the five days will be on, added to the back of the school year. Um, the, there, no, we don't have the ability to adjust anything in the interim such as a shorter Thanksgiving break with potentially less traveling people and so on. That's by contract, as I recall.
Uh, that's actually, it's not contract. You could, uh, make that, uh, adjustment. I mean, that's, that's something that could, could be decided, I suppose, down the, the road. That's, that's not locked in that you couldn't do that. Uh, I think as we looked at the calendar for this year, uh, this was a year where that start was pretty early anyway, right? So the board will kind of remember there's a cycle to that start date kind of coming up. So this year you were actually, we were actually slated to finish school in front of Memorial Day. So, uh, again, as we kind of weighed out or looked at those options, I don't think it puts us back to an unreasonable date in June. We're still out potentially, uh, uh, earlier than, uh, than we, we have been. And the last thing I guess I'll say is that, uh, not that we have definitively said that, that we will do this, but, um, remote learning or e-learning is something I'm pretty sure we've, we've, uh, we've adjusted to at this point. So the concept of a snow day, it may not be, uh, as necessary moving forward if we know we have, uh, the ability to execute an e-learning day.
That was my question. So that we, we not, we're, we're equipped to teach on those days?
Fully equipped with all the tools to, to do that.
Just to be clear, we're, this is the first time we as a board are seeing this, this calendar, right?
Correct.
I did, we may have talked about it in the previous meeting. I can't remember, right? Or maybe you've mentioned it earlier.
We, I think a question was asked here and a question was asked on both of the community Zoom calls, uh, as well, that we, we clearly shared with the community in both of those meetings, that this was something that we were looking at, the very real possibility that.
So when we vote tonight, we will define that as a fact, subject to whatever in the future. Okay, great.
By the way, snow days seem pretty simple right now, huh?
Yes.
Okay. Um, can I have a motion and a second to approve the revision to the 2020 dash 2021 school calendar as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Matheson?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Long. Mrs. McConaughey, would you please call for a vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So the, uh, revision of the 2021 school calendar has been approved as presented. And two more action items. Uh, number five is approval of a guest teacher increase for permanent guest teachers, guest nurses and guest teacher assistants for the 2020 dash 2021 school year.
Yep. Yeah. So just, uh, a little bit of background for, uh, reminder, uh, for the, the board. We, uh, have utilized, uh, what the district calls permanent guest teachers, um, actually for a number of years. So, uh, a guest teacher is a substitute, uh, teacher. And anticipating what the substitute need is, we, we've kind of moved to a plan where each building has an allocation of permanent guest teachers that are always housed at that building. And they assume the very first substitute need, right? Within that, that building. It's just a, a way to be a little bit less reliant on the daily, uh, sub pool. Uh, and so, um, we, we have had a, a, a guest teacher, uh, pay rate. We anticipate going into this year that there will be an increased need potentially for substitute teachers. And so we'd like to allocate the, this item isn't seeking approval to allocate additional, uh, guest te, guest permanent, uh, guest teachers. We'll do that, but we'd like to increase that pay rate to make sure that we can, uh, secure those guest teachers and, and we have them available. Um, we've also, uh, sought to increase the pay rate for our guest nurses. The operation of those two health spaces is going to make it, uh, incredibly important to always make sure we have an RN in, in each of the, the to always make sure we have an RN in, in each of the, the buildings. The good news is we'll have a little bit of a backstop with, uh, Sue Vasco operating in the, the position that she is. But I think increasing that, uh, rate is a, is a good piece. And then, uh, we've also sought to approve that, uh, guest teacher assistant rate as well. Um, again, we, we do want to make sure that we can fill all of those positions.
And all this was kind of incorporated into that contingency or?
It was.
This was one of those elements that we knew we had to address.
Absolutely. Yeah. There've been considerable questions around the ability to procure, uh, substitutes, right? This isn't going to entirely solve that, that problem or that need, but I think this is a, a good and a prudent step.
Other questions?
I have one kind of related question or maybe it is this question, but the, I'd like to see between now and the next board meeting or at the next board meeting, they, you know, somewhat of a staff, uh, presentation of how many staff members are, you know, uh, going to sign up for virtual learning? How many going to partake in the classroom, uh, environment? How many are not going to do either? How many third party teachers we may have and so on? Just to get a feel for what, what, how that's going to evolve. If that, you know, again, Friday update's fine or, uh, you know, next board meeting just, uh, you know, to assure that we're, we're getting covered is my, my biggest concern.
Okay. Uh, can I have a motion and a second to approve the guest teacher increases for permanent guest teachers, guest nurses and guest teachers assistants for the 2020 and 2021, sorry, let me say that better, for the 2020 dash 2021 school year as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Crabtree.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Erickson. Mrs. McConaughey, would you please call for a vote?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. The, uh, motion passes for the guest teacher increases for this coming school year. And then final is approval of a face covering policy for the 2020 dash 2021 school year. Any information, Dr. Schuler? And I think the first thing to maybe point out is how we're approving a policy without 30-day notice that we typically use.
Yep. Uh, and, and so, uh, again, the, the board does have the latitude, if you need to pass up, up a policy on, uh, shorter notice without that, that, uh, window, you have the ability to do it. I do want to point out and just be really clear to the board, this is not a required policy. It is a state mandate that students, uh, and staff, when they are in our buildings or anybody that's in our building, you must have a, a face covering. So it is not essential that this be codified in policy, but there's obviously been a fair amount of question, uh, from, uh, from community and even parents on, you know, how, how do we know that people are going to adhere to, to that requirement and what happens if they don't? Having it in policy simply provides, uh, our administrative team, um, with one more, uh, one, one more written support, obviously of the expectations that, uh, that we lay out. So, um, I don't think that there's anything, uh, in the, the policy. Board members have had a chance to, uh, to review it. Um, it, it's clear just on the expectation, when they're expected to be worn in the, the building. Um, there are reasonable accommodations that can be considered for a face covering, but I want to make sure that the board knows and understands in community, um, that that is going to be a rare exception, right? That is going to be a very unique circumstance that's going to lead to that. And there is a, a team, just as you would have an IEP team, that's going to oversee that conversation, uh, on the potential need for an accommodation and explore with the family then what is the alternative, right? To, to that. So, uh, an accommodation does not simply mean that a student isn't going to wear anything over their face. It's going to mean that, that the building team is going to explore with that student if there's an, an issue around the, the face covering. What are other forms of, of PPE that would be employed, uh, that could be employed to make sure that obviously both students and staff, uh, are safe. But there's been some buzzer question about that on, you know, will, will people work around that? Know and understand, uh, that accommodation is going to be the exception, not, not the, the rule around that. Um, and then the last piece that I'll just point out, uh, is, you know, we, we have in the, uh, the agenda item itself, the face covering policy for, uh, 2020, 21. If you look at the very bottom of, uh, the policy, it's very clear that the application and duration of this policy extends to the period of time where that is a requirement inside of our building. So at the point that IDPH and/or ISBE through their joint guidance stipulates that that's no longer necessary, uh, in our buildings, that would be the trigger point that, uh, the, the board then would, would come back to this.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Um, I have a question. Um, can you just, just because some chatter I've heard and seen online, um, just talk about where the line is between discipline and asking someone to leave or, you know, I just think about like, I think there was, like, I've seen in multiple places, like, let's say Jenna and I are in third grade and it's after lunch and I take my mask off to show her how blue my tongue is from my Jolly Rancher I just ate. Like, I think there's some parents who are afraid that's going to get their kid thrown out of school. And I don't think that's what we're saying at all. And so I just, I think maybe just talk about that briefly, just so parents have a clear understanding. But then on the, on the other end of that too, that this is, this is a mandated item, you do have to wear a mask. And so I think just talking about that little, that line of, you know, how, you know, where that, when we say discipline, you know, maybe taken, what does that actually mean?
Yep. So, uh, one, I guess start as a foundation, right? We, you always teach expectations at age appropriate levels, right? So what that looks like, how you teach a first or a second grader, an expectation varies greatly from how you teach a 11th through 12th grader, right? What a, what an expectation is. Um, also, right, in the, in the, the policy, the policy stipulates that obviously a student is subject to disciplinary action. They not, right? But, but even within your discipline policies, uh, understand or realize that, uh, there, there's a range of how you respond that is going to be driven by age, age appropriateness and, uh, the, kind of the, the willful intent that's going into that. So this policy does not mean that if I'm in a class and I inadvertently pull my mask off for a second and put it right back on, or forget and I make a mistake, it does not mean that a teacher's going to immediately turn around and say, you're out of the class and school, right? Uh, but it does provide the, the, the backing and the support that if, if a student is willfully just saying, I'm not wearing a mask, there's a clear path for how you respond to that, right? So, uh, it, I've seen that question on both sides, right? I've gotten the same question from parents saying, how are you going to enforce this? I want to know you're going to have an iron fist. And the same question saying, you know, like, I, I want to be, I want to make sure that my first grader's not going to be tossed out of school the very first time they accidentally pull their mask down, right? Both will be true.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, can I have a motion and a second to approve the face covering policy for the 2020 dash 2021, uh, school year as presented?
So moved.
Moved by, moved by Mrs. Booten. Seconded by Mr. Hamlin. Mrs. McConaughey, would you please call the roll? Uh, I don't remember. Susan moved. Rod, uh, seconded.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. So the, uh, new face covering policy for the 2020 dash 2021 school year has been approved. Um, a couple of quick comments before we get to any possible public comment. One thing, uh, I think I've talked to individual board members, um, in your green folder is, is a draft resolution, which I, I noted that some other school districts are doing. Um, we are not required to do this, but, uh, I ask that you just kind of take a look at that. Um, we, myself or Chris Crabtree will reach out to you to have a discussion and we may choose to bring that to the board, uh, maybe for a vote in our August meeting. So not really on the agenda tonight. I'm just kind of pointing that out to, uh, ask you to take a look at it and we'll, we'll get in contact with you individually. Uh, secondly, I want to acknowledge Jahan, who I think I see four stations set up in the room for technology. This is our second attempt at, at live streaming. We don't typically do this and I, I trust that it went a lot better this time. And Rod's shaking his head too, so I'm sure he had a role in that. So thanks for all your effort. I know there was a lot of work before and I'm sure there was going to be a lot of work after tonight. Uh, so I just want to acknowledge your, your work. Um, next, uh, meeting is August 12th. That's our regular meeting. So we'll be, I think, back here at Hubble Middle School again. Um, probably more of a traditional business meeting, the, the kind of stuff that we typically have to deal with every month. Uh, now we have public comments for non-agenda items. There's nobody signed up. So with that, we'll just move to adjourn. Uh, there'd be no, no further action to come before the board in open session. Can I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Crabtree.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hamlin. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Okay. The meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.